Okay, and we're recording. Thank you.
Okay. Pursuant to recently adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, included in Public Act 101-0640, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. On March 17, 2020, I issued a declaration of emergency pursuant to the authority granted by the Village Code, the Illinois Municipal Code, and the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act to address the health threat posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. On June 15, 2020, I executed a written determination that given the ongoing emergency associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent at this time until further notice. On June 26, 2020, Governor Pritzker issued a new disaster proclamation and executive order 2020-43. That declaration declared in-person attendance at public meetings of more than 50 people at the regular public meeting location to be infeasible in accordance with the Open Meeting Act as amended by Public Act 101-0640. In accordance with the governor's disaster proclamation, my declaration of emergency, and my recent determination regarding meetings of the Board of Trustees and other village boards, I as village president hereby determined that in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees and other village boards are not practical or prudent at this time and until further notice. Accordingly, this joint meeting of the Village Board of Trustees and Community Relations Forum is being conducted virtually with members participating through Zoom webinar platform. Village manager Phil Corrali is in the village hall as required by law. Phil, would you please read the role? Please call for both the Village Board and Community Relations Forum.
Certainly, President Levin. Trustee Hallwax?
Here.
Trustee Listner?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Here.
Trustee Ruben?
Here.
Trustee Vrie?
Here.
Chairperson Clark?
Here.
Member Alisco? Member Flanagan?
Here.
Member Gary?
Here.
Member Moses?
Here.
Member Mizell?
Here.
Member Scott?
Here.
Member Valvassori?
Here.
And member Young?
Here.
Okay. I ask each member of the Village Board, Community Relations Forum, and staff to mute your lines if you are not speaking to help minimize background noise. Members of the public are muted and should remain muted during the meeting. In accordance with this supplemental rule, the board approved on April 16, 2020, here is how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. At this time, I will ask village manager Corrali to read the public comments that were submitted prior to the meeting in accordance with the instructions that were published with the meeting materials. Phil, did you say there were no public?
There are no public comments that have been received.
Okay. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencoe-meeting, that's singular, at villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to 400 words. There is one housekeeping business matter for the village board before we begin the training this morning, which is the extension of my prior emergency declaration, which would otherwise expire at the end of this special meeting. Our procedure is after I ask for a motion, I will ask each trustee if they have any questions or comments on this item, and after that, I will ask for a roll call vote from the village board. As I said during current, as I said, the current declaration is set to expire at the adjournment of this morning's meeting. It is recommended that the declaration expire expiration be extended. Do I have a motion to approve the extension until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the Board of Trustees?
So moved. Mulvaney?
Second.
Phil may have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listner?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Yes.
Trustee Ruben?
Yes.
Trustee Vrie?
Yes.
Okay. Now to the important business of this morning. Glencoe has a longstanding and public policy promoting mutual respect of all people, and our Community Relations Forum is actively working to promote dialogue about inclusion, racism, social equality, and community building. In 2017, the village adopted a welcoming and inclusive community pledge that underscores the village's strong commitment to the inclusion of all people in our community. As we continue working to support equality and inclusion in all aspects of our community, we believe that it was important for our village board, Community Relations Forum, and our staff to have a common foundation of what it means to be an inclusive community and organization, how we can foster a sense of belonging for all people and build stronger relationships within our community. We are very pleased that our village board and Community Relations Forum are participating in this program today with Erica Walker, who had previously worked with our Public Safety Department to provide inclusion intelligence training and who will be continuing her work with all of our staff over the coming months. Would Village Assistant Manager Sharon Tanner please do the honor of introducing Erica to our boards today?
Certainly. Thank you, President Levin, and good morning again to the board members and the forum members. Thank you for joining this morning. I'm very pleased to introduce Erica Walker, who's the president and CEO of the Walker Thomas Group. Erica brings more than 20 years of experience in diversity consulting, human resources, leadership, development, and training. And prior to starting her own firm, Erica was the vice president of the Kaleidoscope Group, a diversity consulting firm, and held multiple positions with Hewitt Associates in human resources, leadership, and development. Erica is an experienced speaker, writer, author of a book, and a consultant. She's worked with local government clients in the Chicago area and private sector clients throughout the United States and internationally. As President Levin mentioned, some of our staff have had the pleasure of training with Erica previously and had truly excellent feedback. So we're confident that today's session is going to be engaging and thought-provoking, and we're very pleased, Erica, that you're here with us this morning. So welcome, and I will turn things over to you to get started now.
Wonderful. Good morning to everyone. Glad to see you. Thank you for that. Glad to see you on this Saturday morning. Everyone is chipper. So this is going to go on until about 5 o'clock today. And yeah, just seeing if you were listening. All right, we are listening. So I created as much interaction as we can given this kind of platform. I look forward to meeting you in person, though, at some point so that we can do some more training and have some more smaller discussions and continue to work together. But with that said, I am going to share my screen, and we shall get started. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, very good. Thank you guys really for having me. I'm excited to extend this training to the board and Community Relations Forum. I encourage you to unmute yourselves and comment when I ask for comments, but also if there are just questions that you have, by all means, and then things you want to share. Let's make it interactive and as if we're in the room together the same way that we would participate that way. So with that said, I'm going to get us started. And look, stuck already. Okay, good. We're moving forward. I'm going to start with introductions. I know you know each other. I can see your names. But I want to just get a little bit more information, if you don't mind. And so if you could share your name, so whether you're on the board or the forum, how many years you've been serving in this capacity? And then the important question, or the equally important question, is one word others might use to describe you. Okay? So I'm going to just call your names in that way. I'm just going to do it from the order that I'm seeing on the screen. So Sharon, will you kick us off?
Sure. My name is Sharon Tanner. I'm the assistant village manager. I'm also the staff liaison to the Community Relations Forum, and I've been with the village for just a couple days short of five and a half years now, and it's absolutely flown by. One word that others might use to describe me is loyal.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Joe?
So I'm Joe Hallwax. I'm a village trustee for roughly a year and a half. And in terms of words people might describing, it depends. If you're in my house and close friends might say loud, and other people might say resilient. So good morning.
Okay, thank you. Larry?
I'm Larry Levin, the village president. I've served in this capacity for the past seven years plus. I guess the one word that people might use to describe me is friendly or caring.
Okay, thank you. Maureen?
Hi, I'm Maureen Valvassori. I apologize. My allergies are getting the best of me, and I'm struggling to have a voice today. I've been a part of the forum for four years, and I think people would describe me as highly organized.
Okay. Maureen, come to my house, please. I need highly organized. Thank you. Jonathan?
Hi, I'm Jonathan Vrie. I am a village board member. I've been on the board for five years. Like Joe, I probably have certain words that are used to describe me in the house and then out of the house. My kids probably say one word, and others others, different ones, but maybe reasonable.
Okay. Thank you. Gary, good. Gary, will you go next?
Oh, sorry. You broke up a minute there. So I'm Gary Rubin. I've been a trustee for, what, about a year and a half or so now. I've been on the forum for two or three months. And one word, this group knows that I'm not usually at a loss for words, so maybe that's the word, wordy.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. I'm going to look for your wordiness today. Thank you. Okay. Dipty?
Yeah, hi. I'm Dipty Clark. I'm the chair of the Community Relations Forum. I've been here about three, four months, maybe. And one word, I would say inclusive.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Barbara?
Yes, I'm Barbara Miller. I've been a trustee for seven and a half years. And one word that I think people would use would be trustworthy.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Robert?
Yeah, my name is Bob Young. I've been on the forum for several years, and the one word I would use to describe me is Bernie.
Burning?
Bernie.
Okay. Gail?
Bob, did I hear that right? Did you say burning?
No, I said Bernie.
Bernie?
Bernie.
Oh.
Sorry, I heard burning, and I wanted to understand more.
So why Bernie, then?
It's my dog.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Gail?
I'm Gail Listner. I'm a village trustee. I've been a trustee for three and a half years. And I guess the word people would describe is hardworking.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Anise?
Good morning. My name is Anise Moses. I've been on the forum for about two minutes. I think this is my second or third meeting. And one word others might use to describe me, I think, would be passionate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy? Oh, sorry. My name is Amy Mizell, and I am a 50-plus-year resident of Glencoe. I have been only on this committee for a few months myself, so very new to that. My background's in heading up human resources, so I thought this might be an interesting fit. The word to describe me as a tough, I hate to jump on another one, but caring kind of comes to mind. I hear that. So I think I'll use that.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Margot?
Hi, my name is Margot Flanagan. I am a member of the Community Relations Forum. I have been on the forum for, I think, about 15 years. And one word, maybe devoted? Not sure.
Sounds like it. Thank you. Gary, good to see you.
Nice to see you, too. My name's Kerry Lewandowski. I've been the Public Safety Director in Glencoe for about seven years now. And I think one word people would use to describe me would be reliable.
Okay, thank you. Hillary?
Hi there. I'm Hillary Scott. Hate going close to last. All the good words are taken. And I am a member of the Community Relations Forum, like Anise, for about two minutes. And I would say, going with the theme, inside the house versus outside the house, I think a lot of people would describe me as funny, with an emphasis on the silly. People in my house would probably say that's just weird. I live with teens.
Very good. Thank you. Phil?
Good morning. I'm Phil Corrali. I'm the village manager here in Glencoe, and I've been in that role for just about almost seven years now, which is amazing that that much time has passed. I'd like to think that a word that people would use to describe me is considerate.
Okay, thank you. Dwayne?
Hi, Dwayne. Gary, I've been on the forum for about two and a half years. And one of the words that would describe me would be, let's see, determined.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
Hi, Pete Mulvaney. I've been in Glencoe about eight years, been on the board about six. I serve as the chair of the Sustainability Task Force. And people tell me I'm tall. I know that's not what you're looking for. So I'd say thoughtful.
No, you can be tall. That's totally fine. Totally fine. And so I'll go last. So Erica, president and CEO of the Walker Thomas Group. I've been in business now for 10 years. I can't even believe that myself, and been doing this work for 24. And a word that, excuse me, others would use to describe me is different. So I will unveil what that means as we go on. Maybe you will pick up on it. So my question to you is, why do you, well, first, what did you notice about these words?
These words are very positive.
Exactly. They are very positive. And so I, maybe you all are really great people. I don't know, but let's go there. A lot of times, the words that we use are our strengths, right? And so that's good. I just want to make sure that we don't over-rely on our strengths, and we also think about some other areas that you may need to improve. Because sometimes, if you have a strength, if you put the word "too" in front of it, so, too nice, people are like, you know, is this person going to really tell me the truth? They're always so nice. Am I really getting their perspective, et cetera? But what other reason do you think I might have asked this question about other word that others would use to describe you?
It may not be the same as the word you would want to describe yourself.
Exactly. And so as we're talking about this topic of diversity and inclusion and culturally responsive, we've really got to understand how we're showing up. So we all, you know, most of us think we're really good people, and no doubt that we are. But sometimes, we're showing up in a way that is different from what we intend. And so the question is, do you know how you're showing up? That's the first question. And if you do, is it in alignment with who you really are? So this is just an opportunity for awareness. If in your mind you were struggling to think about what the word would be, that just says to me, maybe you can ask for more feedback, both formally or informally, so that you know. Does that make sense? Yep. All right. We shall move on then. And so the beginning of this is really just setting the stage just to ensure we're all on the same page about the topic. So I'm going to go over some key terms next. And what I'd like to do is just provide the term and just get some perspective of how you would define it. We don't have to, you know, it doesn't have to be perfect, but just want to get some idea of how you would define it. I know that you should all have a participant guide right now. So I would ask during this time, on this particular section, that you don't look at the participant guide, but just come from your own hearts and minds around how you would define these words. So as you think about diversity, how would you define diversity? What are words that come to mind for you?
Different than myself.
Okay. What else?
Different ways of looking at the world.
Okay. I like it.
Multiple backgrounds and perspectives.
Yes. Anybody else?
Multicultural.
Variety, Dipty. Okay. And Anise, were you saying something?
Multicultural.
Multicultural. Okay. So I have defined it here as different cultures, backgrounds, knowledge, and skills that make each of us unique. So I think all of you hit it on the head, not rocket science. And I think we've all evolved to a place of knowing that it's certainly beyond race and gender. But, you know, a lot of times, people just still don't know that. So this is the definition that I use. Inclusion, what comes to mind when you hear that word?
Together. Inviting or inviting?
Inviting, Joe?
Yes, welcoming.
Not being left out.
Okay.
Accepting of differences.
Okay.
Belonging.
Belonging, okay.
Participation.
Yeah. So this is a definition, when we were doing work with the Public Safety Group, that I adapted a little specifically for the village. So creating an environment that motivates all employees, and so I would say here, employees and citizens, okay, to collaborate and share what they know to meet the needs of diverse community and encourages them to participate in the village, participate in making the village a great place to live and work. So the point here really is that everybody's involved. When you think about inclusion, you don't want to think about certain sectors of your population, certain kinds of citizens. You really want everyone to be involved, the businesses. You want people to be motivated to share what they know so that all of us, everyone who's working here and visiting here and living here, they want to participate in making this a better place to live and work. Does that make sense for everybody? Okay. Inclusive intelligence, I'm going to just go ahead and give this definition. And so it's understanding the habits of behavior that advance employee engagement, increase teamwork, retention, innovation, and productivity in a diverse workplace. Of course, this can also be used for diverse community. But the point is, it moves it from awareness to behaviors. So what behaviors might you adopt as a forum, as a board, to really make this a more diverse environment? Cultural competence, how would you define that?
Knowing how to integrate and include the diversity of your community.
Respect.
Okay. Integration, respect. Okay. Say a little bit more about respect.
Well, respecting that everyone is different and just understanding that without thinking you're one-off in a way.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Other cultures and people.
Say that again for me?
Just exposure to others.
Yeah. So I like all of these. I like the integration. So I like the respect and the exposure. And Peter, I like the integration of what you learn, right? So it's becoming aware of the values, beliefs, and communication styles of ourselves and others. But I think integration's a really good word, because to know it is one thing, but to become culturally competent, or what will be more for your teams, would be culturally responsive. That means you'd not only be aware, but then you would respond differently. You would integrate this knowing into how you are running the village. Okay. Non-binary. What comes to mind when you hear that?
Neutral.
Okay.
No he or she or they.
Okay.
That's what I know from my teenagers.
Yeah, our teenagers are very smart, so.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, this is sort of a formal definition, a category for fluid constellation of gender identities beyond the woman, man, gender binary. So translation, not woman or man, that the person does not identify as male or female. And so another word for this is also gender queer. You might hear that. Okay. Emotional tax. What do you think that means?
Toll it takes on your emotions.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the toll it takes from any kind of anxiety, from having to, I guess, be on alert for not being accepted.
You got it.
So this is where I keep talking about allyship, and this is why we need to be allies or need allies, because personally, I can tell you, it takes a toll on trying to convince others that you are like the other person or no difference. So after some time, you lose that, and you actually are taxed, like really, you can't be fighting anymore.
Yeah. That's absolutely correct. And what, go ahead, Dipty.
That's it.
Okay. And what's important to note here, in addition to what you've said, because that's absolutely correct, you'll find sometimes in a work environment or a group like both of the teams that you have, sometimes. sometimes a situation may arise. And if you're the person who is the minority, and I say minority, meaning just the smallest amount of whatever that is, so maybe race, sexual orientation, it may just be thinking style, right, whatever that is. Sometimes when you see people react strongly, the thought is, wow, what, you know, that seemed like an overreaction to this thing. Sorry, you know, made a mistake. Didn't mean that. Let's move on. But what's been happening is, there's an emotional tax that's been taking place over time, right? So for you, if you're a part of a majority, and again, whatever that is, that could be a generational majority, it could be, I've been in the village for 20 years and I've only been here one year. So whatever that is, over time, this feeling of being guarded and trying to protect yourself from bias, really starts to impact your well-being at work, the way you live, and then the way you think and respond, right? So we've got to give that some thought, because so often you hear, well, you know, really just, you know, boy, they seem awfully angry, or they seem really upset about this thing. But that's just sort of a cumulative thing that's happened. This gender.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry, thank you. Is this similar or different? Over the course of the summer, obviously, with all of the things happening in the news, I feel like some of us have become more aware of the idea that, and I'll just use myself as an example, perhaps I've been relying too heavily on my own Black friends to explain, how does this feel and what's this like for your family and yada, yada, yada? And that comes from a good place, if you're me, of course. But it is exhausting for my Black friends, because they're also having that conversation with all their other white friends and all the other white people in their life. So I'm using an example, because I think it's easier. But is that the same, or is that a different thing from the emotional tax?
No, I definitely think it's a form of emotional tax. And so, and thanks for asking a real question. And I hope that our dialogue is this way for the rest of the training. This is a good, safe place to ask real questions and have, you know, just real dialogue. And so many of my Black friends have expressed this emotional tax that you're referring to. Now, I personally feel differently, because I feel a level of excitement that people want to know. And so if you want to know, I want to tell you. And if it's 100 people that want to know, I want to tell you 100 times, because I think that's how we move forward. But I do have friends that are like, enough already, stop asking me. So, but yes, I would definitely say that that is a form of emotional tax. It just shows up in all sorts of different ways. Yeah, thank you, Hillary, for asking the question.
I'd like to point out that an emotional tax doesn't have to be a negative. It can be very emotive taxing to have a wedding, to have a baby. Yeah, we should just, I think, be aware that, I just don't want to label everything as negative here. I know we're talking inclusion, but these terms have, they apply to life in general, not just this topic.
They do. So that's absolutely accurate. So here, though, I'm looking through a diversity lens. So I am specifically talking about the combination of feeling on guard or protecting against bias. But there certainly could be an emotional, you know, tax in a positive way. Even when we talk about the word privilege, which I don't have here, certainly some positive aspects of it. And then there are other ways that we can describe it that are less positive. So, absolutely right. But in this case, I am actually talking about the emotional tax related to guarding or protecting yourself based on bias or feeling different. Okay. Cisgender?
Basically, who you were born. If you're born a female or a male, or...
Yes. So it is a term that is aligned with the gender that you were assigned at birth. And it's interesting, prior to the last, I don't know, 10 years or so, we didn't even consider that. It's like, well, if I was born as a boy, then I'm a boy, and why do we need another word for it, right? But now, because people are born one way but see themselves as another, this is a word that is used. Sometimes they'll just say cis. Civility?
Not in my house.
Uh-oh.
Being with respect, consideration.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I think being, having empathy, so you understand somebody else's situation and you react civil about it. You may not always agree.
Yes. So being polite, you know, showing respect, helping the other person to feel valued. Why do you think this one is so hard lately?
Because sometimes stable means almost like a stand your ground, you're firm on your own ideas and not open to new thoughts.
Okay.
We have this expression in our house, it's probably in a lot of your houses, inertia is a powerful force. And I think, I think we are in a period of a lot of change, a lot of necessary change. And that pushes people outside their comfort zone. And so they maybe don't know how to behave as well as maybe they would in more comfortable territory.
Okay. Makes sense.
I'll go a different route. I'll say it's easier to say horrible things when you're hiding behind a computer, instead of being out in public or in front of people. You don't see what the emotional reaction is, you don't see the physical reaction, and you lack that emotional intelligence around the things you say. So since we've, you know, 08, 10, Facebook, Twitter, people hide behind horrible comments, and it's really easy to be uncivil when you're in your own house, just clicking away as opposed to in-person.
And I agree, Joe's point, because that is the generation today. So it's actually harder for me to associate with that. But I see that that's how the generation today, the younger generation, deals with it. However, when you're called out in the open, in-person, to have a discussion about what might have been posted, most people do not know how to handle it. And that's where civility does not exist, because they just don't know, when they're called out on something they might have written online, being behind the scenes, how to actually face that reality, face that consequence, when you are in-person, when somebody is questioning that.
Yeah.
I think one of the things that I've been talking about with a friend of mine is that, you know, in polite passing, you know, you say to someone, you know, how are you? And we both feel like there needs to be a different greeting at this point. Because if you're gonna say, how are you, to people right now, and people are gonna authentically answer, then you need to be able to be present for that. You know, it just used to be a thing you say when you pass someone, how are you? Fine, how are you? Like, how can anyone right now say that they're fine with everything that's happening? So, and also for me, in my house anyway, like if I'm saying to one of my kids, you need to be civil, like we're at like the lowest level. Like, to me, civility on some level feels like a very artificial politity. It's never been something that I've felt is a super authentic, genuine thing. It's just sort of like the mask that people wear to kind of, you know, be, to appear a certain way. For me, I'm not sure that it has a lot of teeth in it for someone to be civil. I'm not sure that I feel like that's a super authentic way of being, but.
Okay. Thank you for being so honest about that. So this is a good topic that we should engage in throughout this session. So from my perspective, civility should not be inauthentic. I think that's a really good point. It should not be politically correct, inauthentic. It should be respectful, though. And so, you know, I will think about, let's say you go to church. And let's say there's something you disagree with your priest, pastor, whomever about. Most of us will likely be civil in that discussion, out of respect. I'm trying to think of who we might respect the most. If you're talking to your mother, if she is still living, even if you disagree, there's likely you're probably going to speak to her in a civil way. Even if you're like, Mom, that is the craziest thing ever, right? And so the thought here is, when we vehemently disagree, how do we find a way to do that and be respectful? And so, generationally, and perhaps maybe just in my own family upbringing, I wasn't allowed in school, in church, or in my home to be disrespectful in my speech, period. That didn't mean I didn't disagree, didn't mean I didn't show emotion, it didn't mean I wasn't mad, it didn't mean any of those things. But it meant I had to do all of those things in a particular way. So just to even be more specific, I could not curse in front of my parents, teachers, or at church. I could not name-call. I could not dismiss. So, but that's a large range of things I still could do, though, in terms of being angry, frustrated, et cetera. Does that making sense? Yes, no?
I agree with Anise, that there's a degree of superficiality to the notion of civility as a politeness. But I also, I mean, I totally get Anise's point. But I also think it's sometimes, it's a prerequisite for engaging with somebody else. If we don't start at a civil position, I think it'll be very hard to engage in a dialogue, especially somebody who you don't know, or you know is on an opposite point of view. So while I think there's a degree of superficiality or inauthenticness to it, I also think it's something that we need to apply and use if we want to engage in meaningful dialogue.
Yeah, on a related note to what Trustee Mulvaney just said, I want to put in a bit of a plug for hypocrisy. Because I think that even, and I'm not suggesting that civility should in any way incorporate this, but even if you don't feel respect, as say, when you were a teenager, you might not have felt respect for your idiotic parents. If you can learn to conduct yourself in a certain way, then you'll get a lot closer to actually feeling that respect. And to the point about what's going on today, you'll be refraining from turning up the heat. And I think that that's important, even if you don't completely feel what you're expressing.
You know, I want to bring up a point about being, when we're talking diversity, and in that context, I think it's, every culture is very different, how things are perceived. And so civility is actually very different for every culture. And I have seen many cases, and I'm not only saying Americans, but in America, if people do see someone with other culture, they'll, they don't understand it and they are very disrespectful. And I think that every culture has to be understood if you want to deal with them. For example, if you are a cashier at Costco, you can't be yelling loud, because there are two very timid Asian women standing there who probably don't understand English. So they're not deaf, they can hear you, they're just not understanding or why you're yelling. So, you know, it's a culture where women don't yell, for example. I mean, you know, I really believe that we have to go outside of our, just our realm of just where we live and how everybody's used to it. Because firsthand, my kids have experienced that coming to the North Shore. In fact, my daughter has even asked to leave the North Shore, because they've seen 27 different nationalities, actually lived among those people. And coming here, they just don't understand when, and I'm talking about teenagers who are future of our country, when they don't recognize what someone else, when they have an empathy for another culture, I think we're just not then going to move in the right direction, you know? And I'm really very passionate about these things, because these are the things that make you the face of the world tomorrow. And when people are going to come and visit us, just like having the word "respect" doesn't really mean anything. Because what are you respecting? Only somebody who's just like you. Or somebody who may be different, and you're just not aware what that culture is.
Dipsy, that's a great point. And so it would be helpful, after this training, to have ongoing learning about other cultures, not just in a formal way, through, you know, someone, me, or someone like me, but also finding ways to put yourselves in situations with people who are different, so that you can really learn firsthand. And there are great ways to do that in an organized fashion that can just be a part of life. You know, a small example is, and many years ago, I worked at Hewitt, and our diversity team, we called it, I forget what it was called. But anyway, our senior leaders had to partner with some of our affinity groups. And the senior leader would partner with one person in that affinity group. And once a month, I think it was, they had to go to an event that that person was doing. So that could be as simple as going to the movies, watching a movie that they perhaps would never have seen, a family picnic, the food of that person, church of that, the faith of that person, you know, regular life stuff. And the point of that was to engage them in a culture outside of this sort of formality and really have an opportunity to learn. So I think, I think it's a great idea. Well, let's keep talking about that. And there are going to be opportunities today where I know we'll want to go deeper, and I encourage us to do that. And simultaneously, I'm also in this initial training, wanting to create a foundation for us and the rest of the work that we do. Okay?
Erica, is there, are we able to message you? Like, if we have a question, or we have a comment that we're sort of like nervous to put out there? Or do you just want everything to be here?
I would love that, but we are not allowed to do chat in this session. I think it's a, I think it's part of the Open Meetings Act, because.
You, yeah, I can jump in on that. Anise, it's a great question. We do have the chat disabled, as we normally do for our public meetings, since this is a public meeting. But Erica, if there are questions that maybe someone would like to share with you offline, is that something that I could email to you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Or even, you know, if you want to send my email now, and if people want to email me, I will check periodically through the session. I won't say your name, and I'll just, you know, read the question. If that's your pleasure, I'm open to it. But certainly later, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe, maybe we can work through that.
Okay.
I just have a point of clarification for Anise. Anise, did you mean during this next few hours, or beyond this session?
I meant for now, and maybe beyond, who knows? But yeah, now. Thanks, Pete.
So last definition here, intersectionality, what comes to mind when you hear that?
Crash.
Yeah. Okay. The movie, right? You're talking about intersection.
I was actually thinking of intersection, things coming together, sure.
Got it. All right.
I was thinking of things crossing over, crossing each other.
Okay.
Overlap?
Yeah. Yeah. So through a diversity lens, so, you know, technically, absolutely, crossing over, crash, right, could be. So it's the, but it's the interconnected social characterizations of race, class, gender, and how they apply to other groups. So in really layman's terms, it's the advantages, and I guess disadvantages though, of race and gender and sexual orientation that are mixed with other things. So as an example, being a woman is, has its own set of advantages and barriers sometimes. But then if you maybe are a Jewish woman, then the intersection of being Jewish and a woman is a different experience. The intersection of being black is one thing. If you are a black and a woman, it's another thing. If you're black and male, it's another thing. You can be a white male. But if you're a white male, low income, living in Glencoe, that's, those intersections create a whole nother profile. Does that make sense? So it's not just one aspect of your identity, it is the intersection of your identity and other social characterizations of race, or class, or education, et cetera. Does that make sense? Seeing some head nodding. All right. So I just wanted to run through these, because it's important that we, again, just have this foundation as we set the stage.
Erica, do you think in terms of gaining this foundation, and setting the stage, and talking, that some of the confusion when one does this type of training go through is a confusion of psychology, in that some of the people are looking at the terms in terms of what it means when they talk to someone else, what that person is doing. Others are looking at it and saying, gee, when I'm talking or doing, what does it tell me about myself, my filters, et cetera? And also confusion between what are process things we learn as children, and how to actually process and do things? How do we interact with parents, or whatever, that allows for substantive and meaningful interaction? And those things that have to do with the issues that are before us. If you look at gender or race, you know, when you begin to analyze, what does it mean when somebody says, gee, I'm black, and I've had 9,000 white people come to me and ask me question X, I'm getting tired of it. And part of that may have to do with the fact that as soon as you're doing that, you've actually classified and separated the people. They're no longer looking at each other as people, they're looking at each other based on a question that we have. So they're not necessarily as sensitive to the real issues going on between the people, and may not reach the level of discussion that you would normally have if you're not making those distinctions as a part of it. If you're talking as people, as opposed to one's white, or one's black, or multiple, and so on. It seems to me that one of the things we take away from going through these definitions is that we are all coming at it from different perspectives, without necessarily analyzing why that is and what that means.
Yeah, that's really astute. And so first, let me address the first part of what you're saying in terms of, are we looking at it introspectively, or are we looking at some of these definitions and concepts as it relates to other people, and how we interact with them and build relationships? So the very first thing I think we should all do is focus on self-awareness. I think emotional intelligence is very important. Step one in emotional intelligence is self-awareness. So as you go through the definitions and everything that I'm sharing with you, it really is about self, right? How do I define this? How do I interpret this? How am I showing up as it relates to this, which is why I started with how other people would describe you, because I really think we've got to start with self-awareness. How, what lens, am I seeing these concepts? Where did they come from, right? And then we can move to what I call social awareness, or not what I call, but social awareness as it relates to emotional intelligence. And so how am I now relating to other people? Am I aware of their perspectives and their otherness, right? Their identities that are different from mine? And as much as we can, which is kind of an interesting thing to do, Larry, it's like, well, I don't want to say, well, this white guy, and this black girl, and the, you know, because now, now we're all separated again, right? But, 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 we also don't want to say, I don't see any color or gender, we're all the same, because that's just not true. And we really got to find a way to be centered in who we are, what our values are, how we got there, why some things push our buttons, why other things don't. And then look at, well now, just like I did that for myself, how might that other person be showing up for those, for a completely different set of reasons? And it's not about memorizing, it is about getting to know, right? Getting, how do I know Larry? I mean, Larry Levin, so what? But how do I know this Larry Levin? What does that mean? Who is he? And so really great points, and we're actually going to go through that. You'll see, coming up very soon, a section on self-awareness. Then we're going to move into my worldview. So it's, now I'm self-aware, then that informs how I'm really seeing the world. Then we're going to move into, okay, great. So within that, how do I start to manage some of the biases that may show up for me? Because by the way, we all have biases, myself included. And so with that, how do we manage it? They're not going away. That's utopic and unrealistic, right? But how do we start to manage them day to day? So really, really, really good points. And we'll delve deeper into what you said as we go through the day. So continuing with just setting the stage, I just want to remind us that there are no quick fixes. A lot of times when we, I'm working with different, I'm just going to say leadership teams as a broad umbrella, it's, you know, we want to move, we want to get it done, we never really get it done anyway. But we've got to just know that, you know, financially, we've got to be mindful, we've got different things going on in the village, what's the best approach? You know, you've got a professional here, but you've got clearly people very experienced in your team. And then we've just got different perspectives in general, so that's the problem. And there are going to be people on your leadership team that either don't believe certain things are happening in your community, or they're just not clear on those inequities that exist. And so sometimes that's an issue, which again, is why we go through some baseline trainings, so that we can all understand that. Sometimes politically, I don't really think with your group at all. As a matter of fact, I was telling Sharon, as I was just getting up to speed on what's going on, that you really aren't handling things in a way that I wish all of my clients would handle things. So that doesn't mean that things are perfect, and it doesn't mean that you have no challenges. It just means that the approach that you're taking is better than most people I'm working with. And try, and I'll get in maybe to some details later, but I'll tell you, it's highly unusual. So I think lack of political will is probably not an issue here. And then I would say the last piece would just be limited knowledge of the value of using this intersectional lens. So there's just this crossover between these, you know, these different layers of people and who they are. So just a quick reminder that there's no quick fix, but at the same time, we're moving forward. Don't get frustrated, that's normal. The other thing I want to say as we move forward, and I think we know this, but sometimes it's just good to call it out, the change is fluid and constant. So again, we never get there, and it's very few things in life and work where you say, well, we never get there. What do you mean, we never get there? Because things are always changing, people are evolving, and so it's just, it's that way. And as you continue your work, I think you're going to find that change can be achieved from different ways. So there may be some new rules that you institute, but then there may be other things like forums that you have that's changed, that could be an entry point. It could be celebrations that you have, that could be another entry point. It could be a formal assessment. I mean, there are just many, many different ways. The other thing is that tensions are not always negative. You can, I know you've had some negative experiences, you will continue to have that. It's normal, and sometimes it's just the force that creates change, so I wouldn't back away from it, or think something is wrong. This is a good question to always ask, and it's a question that I have probably been asking easily 15 years or more, but who is not included? And what can we do to increase inclusion? But a favorite question of mine is, who's not at the table? So I happen to run a political organization, and a lot of our members are in the North Shore. And so when I became president of the board, I had to ask that question. And so one of the things that jumped out immediately was, we have no young people. Everybody is probably 38 to 55. So we have no one in their twenties at all, and no early thirties, that's just out. 60, 70% of our members are in the North Shore. So we're missing the South suburbs, the West. They're missing. We have very few, we have no one with a disability. We have no one who, even though this is a bipartisan organization, we really don't have an equal amount of both voices. So this is a good, healthy question to ask. Okay? Identities and issues are complex and dynamic, so we just have to continue to listen to the folks in our community, and the folks on this team, and then recognize that every municipality has its own story. And the reason I say that is because sometimes people say, well, what have you done in other communities? Let's do that. You've been doing this for a long time, can't we just do that? Well, we can apply some things, but you have a unique story, as does everyone else. So you can't plop it on top of Glencoe, because Glencoe is different from Waukegan, as an example, as you know. But even Glenview, right? I've done a lot of work there, but I find you to be very different culturally than Glenview. And so we just have to keep that in mind as we research and talk to other people who are doing some similar work. Makes sense? Okay. So question, and I would ask you not to look in your handouts right now. What do you think has changed that this is, this topic has become so big? So yes, we know about George Floyd and all of the other things that have happened recently. So let's acknowledge that. What else has changed that this topic, it has become so important? Without looking in your handout.
I think that, going back to our terms, this has been a period of time where people have been greatly emotionally taxed. And I think as a result, our civility has suffered. And I think that that has created an undertone, or an undercurrent, that just doesn't go away. A tension that's there whether we want to recognize it or not.
Okay. Yeah, I would agree with that, Maureen.
I feel like people are feeling more empowered now to speak up. So what has changed is, instead of just asking to be, you know, walked away from a restaurant, saying, I'm never going to come here again, because they were racist towards me, you want to take that extra step to say, okay, well, I'm not going to stand for that. I want to be able to sit here with other people, and why am I not allowed to, right? So back in the days, I would just walk away and say, I'm just not going to give them my business, or, you know, have my husband, who is my white privilege, go in front and talk on my behalf, right? But now, it's different. It's, I feel that, no, it's my privilege equally, and I, what I can say on my behalf is different from when my husband says it on my behalf. So I think a lot of people are feeling a lot more empowered to actually speak how they feel. It's not that they're feeling any different from what they have felt 20 years ago, or 30 years ago, or 150 years ago. It is the same feeling, but people are now taking that extra step, they're feeling empowered, they feel like they have more allies, there is more support, and they are taking charge to be heard. Do you know what I mean?
Yes, I do. I do. Totally agree. What else? So we've heard that people are feeling more empowered, we've heard that the emotional tax is heavier, and impacting civility, which is keeping the whole topics, topic, top of mind. What else?
I'll throw in probably a less, or more controversial one, that I think it's harder for people to get news and facts, and facts are hard to come by, because everything is, you know, media's trying to sell ads, and they're trying to play to their bases. So it's difficult for people to get either objective thoughts, or thoughts from different perspectives. And that leads to kind of hurting of their thoughts, and less civility, less inclusiveness.
Joe, really great point. I don't know how many of you have seen the movie, I think it's called The Social Experiment, Social Media Experiment?
Dilemma.
What did you say?
It's terrifying.
Yes.
Social dilemma?
Social dilemma.
Yes. If you haven't seen it, you should watch it. It is eye-opening, and it very much is aligned with what Joe was saying, so it is, it is hard to discern the facts. Yes, great point.
I think, I mean, I don't know how people are going to take this, but I feel like the administration that's in place right now has emboldened a lot of people to be emboldened, that have positions that are very extreme. And, you know, I think a lot of, a lot of the people that I know are like-minded people to me. And I think when I realized how many people maintain views, or positions, or actively want to put people down, or hurt people, when that bubbled up to a degree where I think, you know, even if you're surrounded by people that are like-minded, that don't think like that, it was, you were, I was no longer able, although I also, I don't want to overstate sort of my awareness, but I do feel like I try to stay very aware. I think it became impossible to ignore that all these divisions were really just under the surface of maybe civility, or, you know, being PC, or whatever it was. And I think that that has exploded reactions, and a lot of feelings, and fear in a lot of different directions, for a lot of different people on both sides, or however you want to say it. And I think, I think that that's been a real change in theory, even though it was always happening.
Yeah. So if I understand you correctly, you know, under the current administration, you feel like because those expressions are so bold, it's allowed others to feel more bold day to day. And so I guess perspectives that have always been there, they're more obvious and loud right now. So the divisiveness has become more obvious, and it's sort of hard to not see, and not say anything about. Yeah, okay.
I think, you know, if we think about it from a generational standpoint, each generation pushes forward, and, you know, young people now are a more diverse group than they've been in the past for this country. And so if we're just talking about this country, having, and... having, and, you know, a lot of what we're talking about is race. So we had other terms that we've just talked about, but a lot of this push these days is revolving around race. And if we look at who's protesting, and I mean, everybody's protesting, but often protests are led by young people whose parents may have broken down some things. And to go along with the empowerment, they feel empowered to be able to go protest, to go do things. And their parents, you know, may have had to do it in a quieter way. So it's, I think some of it is just the next generation is pushing further and doing it in a louder way.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. So I, I'm in agreement with, with everything that's been said thus far. In addition, we've got shifting demographics in the U.S. and therefore in Glencoe. Certainly, technology advances. So cameras are everywhere, things are recorded as, as this training is being recorded. We've got social media, you know, connected to that. So people are filming things, but then they're filming them from their vantage point. So whatever has happened, maybe it didn't start from the beginning, but they caught the chaos in the middle, which tells a particular story that's different from if you'd seen it from the beginning or seen it all the way to the end. And so all of that is impacting, you know, where we are right now. The new political climate, and I think, Anice, you really, really spoke to that. Multiple generations being in the workplace, but I guess just in general, that the younger generation is, is, you know, really leading the charge. And then just becoming generally more aware of history. There's just so much awareness that's coming out across the board. And so I think that that's shifting things as well. And so just wanted to pull that out because sometimes I'm hearing, why, why are things so much right now? And so besides our pandemic, right? And, 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 and all that that's caused, we have all of these things as well. So enough of setting the stage, we're going to move to self-awareness. And with that, I am going to see, hold on one second. Just trying to see if you can see me any clearer. All right, so I have a question for you. As much as you can see on this camera and just based on what I have told you, what, what are, what are, what are some things that you have noticed about me in our, let's see, fifty minutes? Oh, an hour and more, wow, it's almost ten o'clock. Okay, so what have you noticed? What are some things you've noticed? Or that you can see about me?
You're very articulate.
Okay.
I noticed you selected a beautiful nature background.
I did.
You seem like somebody who has interacted with a lot of different kinds of people and has worked hard to try to see things from their perspective.
Okay.
You're open to hear other people's objections and comments and agree and disagree.
Okay, thank you. Hillary?
I said, you're black.
Indeed, I am. Yes.
I, I say that because I think I'm of an age where I was raised at a time where we were colorblind. And so we have this thing that happens with my family where I'll say like, we were uptown and we saw this guy and he was really nice and blah, blah, blah. And did you happen to talk to him? And what did he look like? And I'll describe all the things about that person except for that they're black. And my husband thinks this is like hysterical. He's like, just say they're black. And I'm like, I, I don't know. I feel weird about that and it's ridiculous. So I just, I just thought I'd throw myself under the bus.
There is no bus here. I am a D-black and there's nothing wrong with that at all. Thank you for that. Anything else?
Very receiving of everything that is around you, being said, what you're hearing. It's nothing shocking, you know? At least it doesn't look like from your expressions. You're kind of just taking it in and not forming any opinions. You know, you're not opinionated about anything.
Yeah. Well, I am, I'm just not telling you, no, I'm just kidding.
We're all opinionated, I think.
So, so the reason I ask is, I usually do this in person and Carrie and Sharon have been through training with me. So they've been through this and many people have been through this as well, where I ask, what are some of the things you notice? So people will say, eventually Hillary, they'll say, oh, you're black. Somebody will finally notice I'm a mom and I'm like, thank you, you know? I'm working hard at that. I want you to notice that. And they might talk about jewelry, shirt or whatever. But the next question I ask is, and I'm going to ask you guys this, what are some of the things that make you who you are? And I'm talking about you guys. What are things that make you who you are? What are some things that have shaped you in your life? I'll throw one out, your family. Yeah, I'm going to give you all some, some help because if they heard that silence, they'll be like, what about us? All right, well, what else has shaped you?
Life experiences.
Yes. What else?
Where you're from, like your background, where you were raised, and the socioeconomics of it, all that, all that background.
Yep.
What you do for a living.
Yes.
Your health.
Yes.
Education and training.
All of that, yeah. So here's the point, just making an analogy here. A lot of times we, this kind of goes, not kind of, this goes to self-awareness. We see physical attributes of a person and we think that we know them. Or we have a sense of who they are. And so I'm just going to ask, how many of you have seen some aspects of a person and you thought you knew a little bit about who they were? Just a show of hands. Yeah, because we all do it. It's, it's just normal. But I know that also we've done that and we have found out that we were wrong. So, and sometimes we're right, by the way. And so the point is, and I'm trying to advance my slides. For some reason, it's not going, so I'm just going to reload it. And so the point is that I want us to get into the habit of knowing that that's something that we're doing, but to try to get to know people a little bit and what I call lower the water line a little bit to know who they really are. And so if my slide would advance here, I don't know what is going on. I have a picture of a iceberg. And the reason I use that as an analogy is because we know that most of an iceberg is below the water line. We only see, what, ten to fifteen percent? And then it's, the rest of it is below. And this is the same with people. You see whatever it is you see, but of course, there's so much more to me. And so just, just a way to keep that in mind. So before we go further, I'm going to take a short break. Just a quick five-minute break because we have been sitting here for a minute. So just, we'll have a longer one later, but just a quick five-minute stretch, get some coffee, run to the restroom. So I have nine fifty-six. So at ten oh-one, I will see you back, okay? Ruby. Okay, do we have everybody back? See. There, okay. All right, it looks like everybody is back. So I have, my slide has advanced. So this was just the iceberg, just for illustrative purposes. But the point is, we all make assumptions based purely on what we see. But if we can look below the water line to, to, beyond those assumptions. And so, and when I say that again, it doesn't mean stop making assumptions because we're never going to do that. Our brains are wired and triggered for shortcuts. That's how we intake so much information. So that's never going to end. But I am suggesting that we verify if those assumptions are correct. And so we do that through conversation, questions. Because when we do that, it builds trust and respect and cultural awareness that helps us with conflict and to just operate more effectively. So I want to share with you just on that note, an intersectionality wheel. So everything that we've just talked about, if you look at the inner, inner wheel, it says life experiences and then it says social, right? And so these are all of the things that very much support, create, influence who we are. So our education, religious beliefs, our language, income, our immigration status, all of that impacts our life experiences and who we are. But when we think about the intersectionality of it all, it intersects with, and I'm speaking specifically to your group, the fact that you're on the board or part of the forum. That is a layer that is on top or integrated into everything else. For everyone else who works in the village, you know, if they are students or they're a manager or how long they've been there, if they're contractor, all of that intersects with the, the area that says social. And then you'll see on the outer edge, that, that circle a lot of times is born from all of these things that you see in the middle. So before we move on, any questions on this wheel? This is just showing you how these different factors intersect with one another.
I have a question, and maybe you'll, you'll get to this shortly. But the outer wheel, everything on there sounds like a negative. And so I'm just, is that inevitable?
No, no.
Or is there a purpose to that?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, definitely not inevitable. So there are, by the way, if you Google intersectionality wheel diagram. So sometimes I've used this in HR where I don't have that final, or that final wheel that's in deep green, the outer wheel, circle rather, has different words. Or sometimes it's not there at all. This one is here because we're talking about diversity and some of the things that, that come up as barriers. Some of the isms that, that show up. So no, it's definitely not inevitable. No, that your, who you are does not necessarily mean that you're going to have to be racist or discriminatory or any of those things, right? It just means that these things, these labels, if you will, are often born out of the intersection of the things that are in the middle. Does that make sense? In the inner circles, but no. Yeah, that's a really good point. Really good point. Or question. So, so ba- based on that, I want to start talking about and looking at our own worldview. I want to pose a few scenarios of, of people who may live in Glencoe or work in Glencoe. And the questions that I want us to answer is, how might this person be experiencing Glencoe? What insights could they possibly bring that, that could be positive? I didn't say that, but I'm going to say that could be positive. And then what barriers might they experience living here? So let's just take the first one. And again, we're talking about the intersections of, of who people are. So let's say it's a young woman working a part-time job with irregular hours. How do you think this woman might experience Glencoe? And there are no right or wrong answers here. This is, this is just thinking, let's think about it.
I would say friendly.
Okay. Others, how do you think this young woman might experience Glencoe?
I think it, you know, if she's young and she's working a part-time job with regular hours, that means she's working with a lot of different people inconsistently and probably doesn't interact at the times that regulars come in. And so she may feel very disconnected and maybe not have, you know, a sense of being rooted in any way because it's, it's an inconsistent job.
Okay. Others?
Well, I think she may feel very uncomfortable with the level of affluence in Glencoe. And that's a, that's how I'm reading this question. Just because so many of the residents maybe have something that she doesn't have. And so I think there could be that feeling of being very disconnected.
Yeah. And again, no right or wrong here, just, just trying to have some insight, right? Into how she, she might be experiencing it. Dipty? Did you have a question?
I was just wondering, are we saying our perception of what a young woman feels or what the reality is?
Um, well, if you know the reality, that'd be great. But, but yeah, just the, the, what I want us to do, the point of this is to try and put ourselves in her shoes and see some of the things that someone else might be experiencing that we are not because we're not in that situation.
So how many of us have ever reached out to a young woman like that who is working part-time hours and has come from another town and had a dialogue to, to understand how she feels? I mean, it's, I would like to think we live in a really nice, perfect world. But I, if I haven't talked to someone like that, I, I'm sure the story is very different.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think that's, you know where I'm going, Erica. I think that's where our residents need to take that extra step and, and come out of that comfort zone and, and go out there and say, hey, so you know, you come here. Oh, that's great. How do you like being here? Or, you know, just have a conversation with people, get to know them, make them realize that you're not sitting on a cloud while somebody else is working. I mean, you know, let's just make them feel like we're regular people with them, you know?
So I'll, I'll tell a personal story about this. My parents have been living in their suburb for, gosh, since the eighties when I was in college. And their neighbor, a new neighbor moved in. And so my father tells me, I don't, you know, I don't know what's going on in, in this house. You know, people are in and out and all sort of hours and got all these cars. I don't, you know, I don't like this. I mean, you know, what are they doing over there? I mean, you know, young people, I, I, I just, are they changing our neighborhood? And he was just so funky, right? And so I'm like, Dad, but have you talked to them? I mean, I don't know either, but you've got a pretty negative vent, you know, perspective about them. And so then fast forward a couple of weeks, eventually he did talk to them. And actually they had not moved in. These were the workers who were coming in and out and they had, you know, keys. So they were coming in and out and you know how that goes with construction. Sometimes it's eight in the morning sometime, you know, this has to dry. So they come, but he didn't know that. But he was like, he had a whole story going with this, this, these people and all their cars out there on our street. And all of these, you know, and I'm like, wow, that's really not cool, Dad. But that, that was his perspective because everybody in that, most of the people are retired. And the other ones that are not, they've been there long enough where they know their family. So there's a rhythm and he, these people did not fit into his rhythm. So it was not cool. But now that they've talked, now Dad watches their house a little bit. You know, it is a young couple and he watches and looks out and I'm like, whoa, how about that? So, uh, yeah, have, have we talked to them? But I like what's come up thus far. She may, and this is just a perspective, who knows? But she may feel uncomfortable because it could be that working irregular hours, part-time, that the affluence around her makes her uncomfortable. It could be that she's affluent herself and this is just some sort of part-time job. Who knows, right? But it, it also could be, I, I liked, I think it was a niece that said, she may not feel a sense of community because there's some inconsistencies. So any of us on the line might say, oh my gosh, everybody's so friendly and nice and they're here for you. And it's a wonderful community. But that's because you have an opportunity, perhaps based on your own work schedule or whatever, to know people and see the same people. But if you have irregular hours, you may not have that opportunity. So what insights could she bring to the village, do you think?
It's hard to tell because I think her cultural background make, will make a very big difference in, in that sense. We've already experienced that. We've had a black choker out there in our village and it's shameful to hear what some of the people have said to him and how they have reacted. So it depends if it's a person of color or it's a, a white female. I mean, I think that is really out there to be the main criteria. It just is how we have our unconscious biases and it's, it's just what comes out in that sense.
Okay. And I will, I will add to that, I don't know what your demographics are. But if your median age is forty and if your median demographic is married with children or married, she could bring some insight on just a young woman, you know, depends on if she's single or not. But I'm sort of implying that here. What is it like for a single person, right? So when I lived in Riverwoods and I was working in Lincolnshire, the demographic was mostly families, right? So the insight I brought and I remember when I was living there, wildfire had just opened. There were really no places for single people to go. And so my insight was, you know, there's still some of us that are living out here because of work. And so might there be just a restaurant that, that would not have to be kid-friendly or a bar or something that could be recreational for, for single people? Okay? And any barriers that she might experience? I think same thing that we've talked about already. It could be just, you know, establishing relationships. It could be, um, who knows, who knows what else? Any, any other thoughts on the last question?
Uh, well, I just was going to add about, I think that she could bring some insights around possibly our school schedule. Let's forget, either keep the COVID in mind or not, depending, both have issues. But, um, you know, how easy is it when all of a sudden, hey, one o'clock, you're supposed to, you know, pick up your kid? And I'm like, what? I, you know, I have a job, I don't have any help, blah, blah, blah. So I think she might bring some realistic, you know, obstacles that have to be addressed. Maybe aren't thought of by the planning groups.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we're not going to do all of these, but I'll go to the next one. So Hispanic male who owns a small business in Glencoe but lives somewhere else. How do you think he might be experiencing Glencoe?
I think it's, I think I, I don't mean to keep defaulting to the position that Dipty is defaulting to, but it's, it's so hard to know. Like all you're telling us is he's Hispanic. So if he owns a business and I'm seeing him on the regular, that's probably true for other residents. And we're experiencing him as a kind of friendly face. And just as you said about your dad, like looking at the neighbors, like I'm sure that all of, all of us, as we experience that person are like, oh, that's, you know, Jose, he owns whatever shop. We see him all the time. He's so great. We think we know him, but the reality of his life is really like, unless he's sharing a lot, it's not disclosed to us. So how, how do you say?
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough. The insight you think he could bring?
Well, if he lives somewhere else, I mean, obviously given his background, he's going to have a different, uh, a different, say, background. And we're, we're a small community and a lot of people have been here for, for a long time. So if he's from, um, you know, a community that's very different, he's going to bring whatever perspectives and differences from where he's, uh, where he's from. That's probably, probably bigger. There's not a lot of smaller communities than us that are small and insulated.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would say for, um, the thing that popped into my mind for all of these people and what insights they might bring is, um, if we, if we had a conversation with them all, it would just be curious to hear, uh, what does the tip of our Glencoe iceberg look like to them? So, I mean, I obviously tend to think that we're mostly friendly even to strangers. But I don't know that for sure. I just, I make my observations in the grocery store or wherever. And so if we talk to them, it would be interesting to know. Are people friendly but distant? Are people, do people appear prejudiced? I, I think we could have a lot to learn, but only by having the conversations.
Sure. Okay. So I, I think that's the bottom line here. I also will say, and, and I, and I'm saying this because I hear this so often. And I, I mean, literally two weeks ago, I was speaking to another board and, um, you know, variations of, of these people shared their perspectives. And one of the board members said, I just find this hard to believe. I've been living here for 20 years. My kids have gone to school here, blah, blah, blah. And I just have not ever had any of these experiences. This is such a lovely place to live. This is just really hard for me. And I believed her, I think she's had a great experience along with her three children, two are in college. One's a senior in high school right now. I believe all of that. But what I knew though, is that she had not considered that the intersections of these people may create a different experience for them than being an insider.
Yeah. Could I share an experience that I think might provide a little bit of insight? And it's, you know, I come at this from my standpoint as a, a white man. But moving into Glencoe almost seven years ago, we had, uh, my wife and I had an interesting welcome to our neighborhood and people were lovely. They were very friendly. They came, you know, knocked on the door, said hello. My wife and I were both in our mid-thirties and professional and had no kids. The first question everyone asked us was, how old are your kids? And we had to say, well, we actually don't have any kids. And the shock in that statement that, that we experienced from neighbors who were like, well, I don't know what you're doing here then. And then I said, well, and I'm the new village manager and I'm just moving into town. Oh, I see, I understand now, you know, because why would you live here if you didn't have kids? Was the translation in that. And I think that happened to us about, you know, eight or nine times. The, the reality, you know, we could have, my wife and I could have been having difficulty having children. Or perhaps, you know, we were, we'd made the decision to not have children. And sometimes even the act of being friendly and trying to ask questions that, that engage a person can actually put a person into a very uncomfortable scenario. Going back to, you know, our own experiences and our own realities. And we were able to kind of explain it away. But I remember feeling very, oh man, gosh, are, are people going to invite us over? If we don't have kids that can play with their kids? Are we, you know, are we really part of the community? And my wife and I, we, we fit in in, in every other way, but at the time we had no children. So I just, I offer that as an experience from somebody who moved into town, perhaps without the requisite or prerequisite of you move here because you've got a family and you want to raise them in a wonderful place and it's a beautiful community. And it's, you know, all of those things. But people come here for different reasons. And as we talk through this, I think it's particularly interesting. And it speaks, speaks to Dipty and Hillary's points that you don't really know until you ask the person.
Yes, Phil, you made such a good point. I want, I want to tag along with that because as you know, we've been here for two years. And we came with kids and two middle schoolers. And at a Glencoe baseball game, uh, one of the moms was very curious. If, she didn't even know we were from Glencoe and we were on the same team. And she's like, oh, okay, when did you move here? I'm like, like last month. And where did you move from? Oh, we moved from India. Why did you come to Glencoe? Why would you pick Glencoe of all the places to live in? To me, I know, I know her, she's a good friend now. But I have to tell you, that minute I felt like the most unwanted person on earth because I thought, oh, why can't I just pick a place? I don't, I didn't have to tell her my history. I didn't tell her we could just live in Northbrook. My kids were all born in Evanston. I mean, we are from the area. I didn't have to explain anything to her because I didn't want to. Because I felt like, well, if I'm new, I would have liked a different welcome. I would have liked to hear something else, you know? So I, I think to Phil's point, it's not anybody doesn't mean it. It's again, it comes to that unconscious thing. And I just, this is the message we're trying to build in our community is be aware of what you're saying. You may have lived here for 20 years, 30 years. Your kids may have grown up here. Your kids may have moved to the city and moved back here because they want to bring up their kids here. But that doesn't mean that only those people can live here. Like nobody wants to come from India, wants to come and live here. You know, it's just, um, how it comes across. It's always about how it comes across.
Yeah. These, these stories are great. And, and I posed these, those scenarios on the prior page, not because we should magically know or make hard assumptions. But as a way to, even as you're getting to know them and asking questions, which I highly recommend, is, is just to think about the lens in which they might be receiving them, right? So I will share a personal story. So I worked at Hewitt, uh, lived in Riverwoods. And, uh, the number of times that I was pulled over for no reason, just, I think it got into the double digits. And to the point that my admins would go to meetings and say, oh, she got pulled over again. She's going to be late. Okay? And so it became a really big issue for Black and Brown people. So the village manager ended up having a meeting with our CEO. And maybe a month or two later, it stopped. But this was not just me, just a lot of the Black and Brown people. So fast forward, that was way back in early 2000s. Fast forward, I start, I work in Glenview. I don't have major issues there, but I was also very aligned with the police department. So they sort of knew who I was pretty quickly. So fast forward to Glencoe. This is the intersectionality. As I'm driving up, I am, uh, what am I going to say? I am extremely cautious because my intersectionality says, these are the experiences I've had in the North Shore beyond Evanston, right? And because I've had a lot of them, I dare not go, if it's 35, don't go 37. Cause I'm genuinely worried. if it's 35, don't go 37, because I'm genuinely worried, genuinely. When I get here, I'm just Ps and Qs. I look around. I was early, a couple of times I went to the Starbucks nearby. People said to me, very nice, hey, how are you? So what are you doing here? Uh, getting...
Can I ask, what are you worried about?
I'm worried about getting pulled over unnecessarily. Um, I'm worried about, um, the privilege...
Pull over and you're not doing anything, you're going to get let go, right? So I mean, I guess I'm not, that's the part I don't understand, like there's no, you're not in physical danger, right? And...
Well, I'll back up.
That's something, something I understand.
This is the emotional tax.
Let's, let's listen to her. I want to hear her story. I, I know, you know, we, you may have a different perspective, but I actually want to understand how Erica feels when she comes into our town and what her fears are.
Yeah, so let me, let me back up even further. So can't even remember what part of town, driving with my aunt. She always drove Jaguars. We get pulled over. Um, this is so before Glencoe. Um, an officer comes to my side, an officer comes to her side. He has his hand on his gun. So let me say, for two women who have never, at that time, never held the gun, you know, clearly never used it, never been in any violent anything, um, and un, having no idea why you pulled us over, that's terrifying. Now, if you've grown up with guns your whole life or whatever, maybe that's fine to you. But for two women to have a person on each side of them and they literally had, they didn't pull it out, but they're talking with their hand on their gun, I won't forget it. And that was probably 89, 90, something like that. So I'm going to, that's mine. Now, I will say, there is not a black man that I know in my age range. And this is a fairly startling statement. There is not a black man that I know, and I come from, I would say, a, a strong middle-class environment, meaning, so that means they drive decent, nice cars that have not been pulled over, thrown, pulled out, thrown against the car, some physical altercation just in asking for license and registration. So I'm not talking the belligerent, man, well, you know, pull it be over to, you know, I'm talking about well-spoken, well-dressed, nice car, nice family, multiple degree people. So I have my experience coupled with every man, black man that I know. If I get pulled over and I believe that I have not been speeding and, and my lights and everything are working, I'm just nervous because I don't know what's going to happen next. I don't know, now, as a woman, I've never been pulled out, so I feel really grateful for that. But I can't forget all of the black men that I know that have, and I know them, you know, not bebop person with hat on backwards or whatever, which by the way, you should be able to do. But I'm, you know, I know them, I know their parents, I know the whole thing. So having that experience and, um, it, it would make, it makes me concerned about what's going to happen next. Uh, will, will this be a fair exchange? Since, because by the way, all those Hewitt times that happened and no tickets were issued, that to me wasn't fair to begin with. So I can't predict what's next. Are you going to insist that I was speeding? And are you going to say it was, I mean, I, I just, I don't know. But the whole process makes me nervous because I've seen so many things and experienced so many others. So back to what would I think here? I don't know and the unknown scares me because I don't know. Now, by the way, Carrie, um, I don't feel that way now because I've had enough positive experiences that I just, I just literally just don't feel that way. But I will tell you, um, and so as an example, when I told my dad again that, you know, I was coming up for the first time, his words were, okay, be careful. That's, that's, um, that's speak for, be on your Ps and Qs. Don't do anything wrong because the perception is, you're, you're just not sure if it's going to be fair.
I am so, um, glad you brought this up and you spoke about your experiences, Erica. I was waiting for you to actually make it more personal when you're talking about some of these points. And the reason I'm, I'm saying that is because it's about perception. It's about how people are viewing, even with one experience. Uh, I can guarantee you for most of us on the call here today, we won't be just stopped just for the sake of harassment. Even I, being a woman of color, have not had that experience. Or an officer stands with, you know, his hand on a gun in an intimidating manner. I have not been intimidated by anybody to what you would, you would see. And it is a fact, it is documented, it is being talked about around the world, whether you want to believe it or not. It is a true fact, the numbers stated, there are statistics around it, right? So for us as a town in Glencoe, this is one of our very key, key goals is, um, we of course want to hear people's stories, but what is it that we can do to make that perception different? I mean, we can't blanketly put everybody in one bucket. All public safety officers are the ones doing this. All of the business owners are the ones doing this. We cannot do that. However, even if there is one instance, it becomes the perception. People don't want to come here because the news spreads. So we want to be in a position to say, not everybody is the same. However, if there is an experience, let's take it up. Let's, you know, Carrie's been very open to hearing our, you know, on our calls, people's experiences. It's, you know, it's for the benefit of the town.
And, and let me just add, um, and it is a big difference. So I can, there's a very big difference between Glencoe, Glenview, Lincolnshire, Deerfield and Evanston. So those are the places I've spent a significant amount of time. And, um, and I will say consistently, um, people in Glencoe have been friendly. Um, I've not been pulled over for no reason, which I'm happy to say. Um, and it, and it's just been a more genuine experience. Um, you know, for some of those others that I named, I, I, I can't say that. Evanston's been fine, um, but the, the Deerfield, um, sometimes in Deerfield and Lincolnshire, you know, we've, we've had different experiences. And, and I think that's probably public knowledge. I mean, this is, you know, some years ago, but you know, the, the CEO who's since passed away really had to have talks with the village managers about, about some of these experiences. So here's the takeaway, guys.
Erica.
Yeah, yes.
Also, in our trying to figure out how to walk in other people's shoes and get there, people are very complex. If you take, let me offer some experiences, having lived in Glencoe for, uh, 70 years and, uh, grown up here and watched it change. Glencoe is different, the experiences you have today than, say, when I was younger. If you take your list of things, we look at the young woman type of thing and it, and it all comes from both perspectives is why it's so important. If we take your story or look at these. Uh, when my children were younger and we had au pairs, I had an au pair, for example, that came from Estonia, was, uh, by virtue of the program. Uh, she then got an opportunity to go to college in the US as part of working for us and so on. And her view of Glencoe and what she was learning and how she felt about it, well, she was very excited to learn about the United States and think about what it would be if she moved here to live permanently as opposed to Estonia. How education was her way into that, because looking and talking to people in Glencoe and being uptown in there. She thought, okay, that's what I need to pursue. And so she was looking at it from a perspective, not of how different Glencoe was, but why that inspired her to want to have a piece of America and the freedom that she saw in America as compared to what it was like to live in Estonia. If you take your his, Hispanic male, when I was, uh, much younger and we're, and I was living here, uh, we had a baker who was in Uptown, who was from Spain, was Hispanic, but was very fluent in English and was here. And his view of Glencoe had to do with what he wanted to achieve and gain from life and to be able to do by having a bakery. And he was looking at it as to how diverse the population was, the level and type of products, the property can make on those products, how nice the people were, et cetera. So as he was looking at it from the standpoint of what is the way to position his business to move forward, be more competitive and do better? So a lot depends when you meet somebody who's here, whatever they're in, and how they work or do things. Uh, ages are very different. The people that lived here in the community was very different. When I was growing up, it, we had a much larger, uh, black population and I, I went to school with a, a lot of, uh, different races, Asians, blacks, et cetera. And we didn't think about the, uh, question of race in the same way when I was growing up, kids do today. So we saw it very differently and experienced it differently. And to your experience, my son, who was very much my eldest son of my second group, as I call him. I have six boys. My wife says I don't do girls, but they're all spread out from 50 down to 21. So I've had a laboratory to watch different generations.
Okay.
Very helpful from a, a business standpoint and understanding people and so on. When he was in high school, uh, their band included people from Chicago and from here, et cetera. And he and a, uh, black friend from Glencoe were in Chicago, uh, at one of their fellow band members' houses. And when they came out on the north side and they were driving along, they were going slowly through the neighborhood talking, they got pulled over by the Chicago police and taken out and frisked and everything because they were convinced that they must be drug dealers because they were going so slowly through that neighborhood. So experiences on both sides have a great deal to do with how you interact, what you learn and what you see from all of these kinds of things. And, uh, just as you were describing how an officer would come up to a traffic stop and have his hand on his gun and so on. From the officer's standpoint in the modern world, unlike when I was growing up, and I used to get stopped at, uh, 12 o'clock at night when I was in high school, coming home by a Glencoe police officer to find out if I had a good time.
Wow.
Each other.
Okay.
Uh, they're looking at it from the same point, the most dangerous thing a police officer can do in the modern world today is make a traffic stop. They get shot all the time. They, they have people try and run them over and kill them. And so they're trying to figure out, how do I survive this? And you're trying to figure out why they're so mean to me.
Yeah.
Understanding those perspectives and putting the things into a context of what our world that we're living in, whether it's in Glencoe today or Glenview or whatever, and what the people make up, is very important in understanding, how do we now take this knowledge to improve the interaction of people? And so I would just add that there's a lot of factors that grow into how you answer any of those questions or how would you approach talking to somebody about them? Hopefully that helps a little bit.
It does, Larry. And, and I, I definitely would agree. I, I think it's important to note that, you know, your son's experiences, you know, the same assumption, you're driving slow, it must mean, must mean X. And so, yeah, you know, we, we, there's not a group that's, um, the exclusive group on, on having these experiences. And, and as we look at the iceberg and the intersectionality, you know, it's not black and, and white, right? There, there, there are layers here. Um, and, and there are some things that are more prevalent for some groups than others. And so all of us, um, you know, probably been pulled over for no reason at some point in life. But when you get to double digits in the same area, there's something wrong with that. And I think it is, a reasonable person would start to be concerned when, um, a similar situation happens. I think just, just a, just a reasonable thought would be like, hey, what's, what's going on here, right? And, and I, you know, you can pay me enough money to be a police officer because it is way too much, right? Not built for it. And, um, you know, I, I'm not sure, and I, you know, again, you can't judge, but if you knew my, and, and so here's the interesting thing about that story. So where the man had his hand on the gun. So my parents, both of them are from Memphis. And, um, my parents started dating in the sixth grade, if you can imagine that. Um, they're both from very large families and growing up in the South was very different. So they had more overt racism than I've ever experienced. So when my aunt saw that at that night, she was practically hysterical, tears, okay? Because of what she'd experienced in Memphis. Now, I was younger and more bold and I'm like, why are you pulling us over? Why do you have this? You know, like I'm, I'm nervous, but I'm more asserting myself. She's literally pleading with me in tears, please be quiet, just do whatever he says, just do whatever. And I'm like, wow. You know, so now we're talking about these layers of emotional tax that I could not even begin to understand because I didn't grow up that way, right? That, that I saw that made me just completely silent because I could see that I, my actions were upsetting her, right? And so I just did whatever they said. I listened to the disrespectful manner in which they addressed us. I did not say a word and we moved on. And so all of that plays into it, right? Um, yeah.
I, the emotional tax that you're talking about, I mean, it's something that I think about a lot. But the different kinds of conversations that happen around a family dinner table, depending on what people at that dinner table look like or what their religion is or what kind of car they drive, that there are different kinds of conversations. You know, I've never had a conversation with my three white sons about where they have their hands on a steering wheel. You know, I tell them like, be respectful if you get pulled over. But there, there's no, you know, I don't, I'm not afraid. But I am afraid for my friends' sons. Um, and there are different conversations and different things. Like you might get pulled over as a person of color and a white person might get pulled over for the same thing. But what goes through people's bodies and their psyches are very different a lot of times. And there's a lot of history to that. And even if you've never been pulled over as a person of color, if you read the newspaper, if you see the news, like that becomes internalized on some level. And, um, I just, I don't think that we can underplay this invisible thing. Like it seems like it's something you see, like in somebody's color, but it's, um, the emotional tax, which I've never heard that term before. I had lots of other words for it, but I like that as much as I dislike that. Um, I think that, that, that's a very powerful thing. Like if you're a woman walking down the street by yourself at night, when somebody starts walking by you and startles you, what are the feelings that go through you that might be different than a man? Or, um, just a lot of different layers to it. And I don't think that we can underscore it enough.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I, I'd like to, um, jump in at this point. I think a lot of people on this call know that, um, I have three adult sons and my middle son is black. Um, and my children are fourth generation Glencoe and, um, born and raised here in Glencoe. And, um, just one story that I've shared with the forum is, um, three years ago, uh, my oldest son was, um, getting married and my, my son came home for the wedding and went to visit a friend in Evanston. And on the way home from visiting that friend, was stopped four times between Evanston and Glencoe. Um, in the same night. And we have, we have had those conversations with my son about what's expected when he's pulled over. And I guess, I guess what I would add is, you know, the emotional taxation for him is... every day he, when he walks out the door, every day when he gets in the car, especially right now, given our current climate. And I agree, I know if I were pulled over, it would be a completely different type of experience. But for him, it is the fabric of his life right now. And it's emotionally taxing, you know, not only for him, but as his mother, it's something that I, it's a concern every day now, every day.
Yeah.
Just thought I'd share. Thank you for sharing that. So here's the takeaway. Do not receive, and I'm just gonna be blunt here, do not receive that all white people are terrible and the cause of all the emotional tax and, you know, some way you should be feeling some extreme guilt. That is not the takeaway. Do not hear that. That is not what is being said. What is being said is there are people and there are all sorts of dimensions, but we'll, we'll talk about race and gender particularly in this moment. Based on race and black and brown people and then gender for, for women, there are some things that we experience that everybody probably experiences, but that we experience at a much greater degree, frequency. And not only that, but sometimes becomes a life or death sort of situation. And so that's just it, you know, that, that's, that's the, that's the big takeaway. And so we do, and, and, and I love what was said earlier, we do have to hear both sides. You know, it's not one side. It's we've got to hear everybody's perspective about it. And, and we have to hear it in, in, from a place of curiosity, but also of compassion. So when I was in Starbucks and in Glencoe, and it wasn't the person that worked in Starbucks. It's the person that looked like he goes to Starbucks every morning, he reads the paper, blah, blah, blah. So when he says, so what are you doing here? Two things, I hear that question differently because what I hear is you don't belong. Thinking from his perspective though, what I think was underneath the question was, I come here every day, I don't usually see you, so what are you doing here? But the chosen words, because it's rare, I can't think of almost any scenario where someone has walked into anything and I say, what are you doing here? Unless I'm really meaning you don't belong here, so what are you doing here? Like, you know, or, or, you know, I'm trying to even think of why I would ever use that. You know, maybe I've walked into work and, and it's 6:00 AM and my admin's here. And I'm like, what are you doing here? And I'm saying like, it's six, why are you here? Or I come back in, you know, when I was working for someone else and, and it's 11 o'clock because I left my whatever and somebody's there, what are you doing here? But, but it always implies because you shouldn't be here, right? But I think the truth, because he, we ended up having a lovely conversation. I think the truth is he was curious, like, hey, I don't know you, I haven't seen you, what's the deal? But I wonder in his own unconscious bias, did he also mean, like, what are, what are you doing here? Like, do you belong here? Don't know. But takeaway is, ask the question, think about how you're asking it, think about the lens in which someone else may be receiving it. And when someone says to you something that seems very different from your own experience, the question would be more, tell me more. And I like, Joe, that you said, tell me more. Because when the question is, when the comment is, I've never had that before, that's hard for me to believe, that's, that's tough. Because now you're in a position of trying to convince. So also Joe goes into, you know, so what would happen if you get pulled over? I am concerned also that I won't be believed. Whatever it is, I won't be believed. Because in conversations on things far less, I'm not believed. Does that make sense to everybody? Or are there any other questions? Right?
So, so as we talk through this, this is, this has been heard before, similar experiences. Obviously, whether they're residents or visitors, we've heard those experiences. I've heard several of them, one-on-one, I've experienced myself. And I feel like, how, how do we, how do we proceed to encourage people to think differently? So that people don't have this perception of Glencoe? Because one of the things that we struggle with is those people who think everything is so great in Glencoe. Wow, like Glencoe is fantastic, this would never happen. Or, oh, I am not a racist. How can you think I'm a racist? I am not a racist. You know, there are always those very stereotypical. But, you know, we're all human beings and from a human being's perspective, it only takes one experience to have an opinion. And if you've had those experiences elsewhere several times, then you have that emotional tax, as you call it. And so there are going to be people coming in with a preconceived notion. They are. There's no doubt about it. There are going to be people of color that probably come to Glencoe with a very preconceived notion, with absolutely no doing of anybody in Glencoe. They're just coming in with that perception and all, only because of their experiences in the past elsewhere, or maybe one experience in Glencoe. How are we to find that, that way of communicating to these people to say, this is normal, this would happen with anybody as a human being, however, especially if people of color are seeing this? Like, I, I'm just struggling with that. How do we make people believe that this is real? That, I guess that's my point. How do you make people believe this is real? This is reality, get with the reality.
So we're going to deviate just a tad bit from the training, just a tad. My perspective, the reason why I want to continue the track that we have here first, is that first, Dipty, everyone on this call has to believe. So, and understand, right? And so Joe, and I'm not picking on you, but Joe genuinely was like, hey, I'm, I'm trying to understand why would that be an issue? So first, we all have to be on the same page. And we're at different levels, period. So we've got to start there before we can get others to believe and understand because everyone on the call doesn't yet, right? And then, so first step, in my opinion, would be to do some sort of formal assessment. And I say that because if we were coming out with a new drug, if we were coming out with a new, whatever it is, I don't care what the industry is, people always start with the current state. They start with a, this is, this is, this is where we are and this is why we need this new product. This is why we need the vaccine. This is why we need the, whatever it is. And so same thing here. So sometimes talking anecdotally is, is wonderful in this sense because we can get it, you know, we can have some honest dialogue about, about things and learn this way. But I think it would be good to find a way to do a survey, do a focus group, do both. So that your community knows that you have done this in the proper manner. And by that I mean, in the manner that you would in any other endeavor. Any other business endeavor, any, anything else. You would always do that in a formal way. And that way you can share with them the quantitative and qualitative results from that. So it is not your opinion, it is not any of those things, except for a real representative sample from your community, the people who live and work there. So that would be step one. Now, of course, some people will never believe it, no matter what you tell them. But a reasonable person, if you have gone through those steps, you will have something to anchor your work in. So, you know, based on what you hear, you know, it's not diversity as a whole, but it would be some specific things that you learn there. Hillary, you had a question?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, because it sounds, I, I love actionable steps. And so it sounds like what you're suggesting could be, let's develop a series of metrics, whether it's, you know, X percentage of people of color are pulled over relative to their white counterparts. I'm just literally doing stuff off the top of my head. And the actual statistic. And then maybe we do like a community statistic. It's like, you know, 30% of people in Glencoe believe, or whatever. Is that, is that what you're getting at?
I am.
Okay. It's, I think that's excellent. Because for me, I have to tell you, I've been in so many of these trainings. I've spent the last 20 years working in black and brown communities. And I think I have a long way to go on my understanding of what, I, I just, I'm still a white woman of a certain background and I, I have a long way to go. And I've gotten really comfortable acknowledging my biases. But I know that that's hard work and I've had more time to do it than some folks. And I, I, it just, it's, it's endlessly frustrating to me when we get in these trainings and we can't start from the, we can't start from the same place in terms of certain assumptions. And so like Dipty, I'm like, how do we get to that place where we can all just agree, just like you did with the terminology in the beginning, here's some shared terminology. These are the things we're going to agree on. How do we get to that place in our community? Because if we're the leadership of the community and we are not in agreement, and I can tell you in my own home, we're not in agreement around some of these things. How can we expect that our neighbors are going to join us? And then how can we do a better job being ambassadors of that work? Because I don't want everyone to always think, oh, well, she's just, you know, so left, she's always thinking this way, blah, 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 and then discounting everything I'm saying. No, in this case, I actually think I have something of value, doesn't matter, can't hear me because I look like this, because I have a Joe Biden sign in front of my house, whatever. It's, it's problematic to me. And I, and I don't know how to get over it because I feel like I've been seeing it for so long, I don't know how it, how it changes.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, it's one of the first steps. You know, you've got to, you know, the three kind of initial, three or four initial steps is, you know, one, figure out your vision for your community. And I'm sure you've done that. And if not, you can certainly add to that. What is your vision for your community? And I say through a diversity lens. I'm sure there, there's a overall vision, but through a diversity lens, what does that look like? Then you then do some kind of current state, right? So if this is my vision, but where am I now? Right? And so that is lots of metrics that include quantitative and qualitative information. And then you look at the gap between the two and that informs your strategy. Because there again are a million things you can do based on what other communities have done and what I say. But it needs to be specific to what the gaps are based on your data and your unique story and where you want to go. And then the next step is to educate. And so we're, we're part of that right now. We kind of skipped a couple of steps, but you educate because it's going to be hard. If, if we wanted to do something with public safety, something that was different, which Carrie, again, you know, it's, I've had just the greatest experiences driving in and through Glencoe. Because by the way, sometimes I'll do a morning class and then I have something in the evening. Or I've got something in Glencoe, Glenview later. So I'm just, because I try to schedule things together when I'm in the North Shore. And so I've had lunch, I've done all sorts of things. I've taken a nap in my car, which is also another thing, like, can you take a nap in your car? I, I know this seems like basic, but the amount of thought I give to taking a nap in the North Shore is really interesting, to the point that I would only take naps at an oasis. Because the fear of if I'm taking a nap on the side in a parked place, you know, where parking is, you know, allowed, is this going to be somehow seen as something other than, I've been up since five, it's seven, I'm sleepy. Right? And so I've had.
Come to my house next time if you want a nap. I have many, many extra bedrooms and nice comfy beds. You don't have to be in a car.
Lovely. My mother would be very happy. She.
I will email you my address. You're more than welcome.
That is very kind of you. Thank you so much. So, so my, my point is, we want to, we don't want to have some broad strokes, you know, we just want to be really specific about whatever comes out of that data. Okay? Makes sense?
Speaking of data, Erica, I have, so Glencoe has done a survey, a survey, I think it was, Phil, help me here, three years ago? Four years ago?
We've done two community surveys, one in 2015 and one in 2019. Is that what you're referencing?
Yes, yes. The last one that you had sent me when I was joining the forum, that was 2019, right? So I, I wonder if we can take those and see the comparison on some very specific questions that we are talking about today and how people have reacted to them and see if there is a trend or a change. And maybe, you know, next year, we even do another survey and then do that comparison again. And, and maybe the survey is different. I don't know. I'm not as, like, you know, an expert with those questions. But I'm sure there are those kind of, you know, surveys out there already that we could just use. But, you know, that may be, to Erica's point, a place to show some numbers, to show some metrics, have some statistics. So it's not me speaking personally from my experience or Reverend Gary or Maureen, you know, with our experience saying, this is how people feel. Or Erica coming into Glencoe, we're actually showing what people have their views on. And, and then we have a formal assessment.
I think it's a great thought. I think we should talk about it offline, but I think it's a great idea, especially if you already have the data there, you should definitely utilize it. For sure. Before I go on, there are some folks on the line that are a little quiet. So I just want to make sure that we're okay. Sometimes the topic gets tough, so I just want to make sure that we're okay. And so just checking in, we're all good?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, you can.
So we're talking about all of these things and, and, you know, education of, of those around us. And a lot of, probably a lot of, I don't know, actually, I don't know what your business is mostly focused on, whether it's communities or police departments or businesses or companies. One thing that, and maybe we'll get there, but all of us are sort of called leaders in the community by being on these boards and whatever. It's harder to influence a community versus a company because you're sort of, you, you're forced to be together in a company. Are we going to talk about sort of ways to work in this community where people don't have to listen to each other versus when we're all forced in a, you know, in a business setting? So, you know, a lot of these things that we're talking about, you know, how, how can we translate them into not just action for all of us to learn something, but to help those around us?
Yeah. So again, I do think that we should have another meeting offline about it. And I don't want to skirt the issue. I just want to make sure that in this session, we build a foundation and ensure we're all on the same page in terms of understanding. But I will say to you, Jonathan, that in terms of the assessment piece that I just talked about and, and having a vision, that is definitely something that you can do from a community perspective. And certainly not everybody's going to be involved, but you certainly can do that and other communities have done that. And so we can talk about that a little bit more. Other communities have also had open diversity classes, something like this. You know, where they do it twice a year. Evanston has actually done quite a bit in this space. So the things that I've mentioned thus far are definitely applicable to the community. And so my work is both corporations, school districts, colleges and universities and communities. So those steps that I've mentioned so far are definitely things that we can do. Okay? And I want to say, just as, as a part of that, as you know, I know this is kind of obvious, but because all of us make up the community and we make up the culture, it's important that the things that we're learning here today, that we're modeling those. Because every little bit helps. Remember one of my prior slides? There was a point there that says, there are multiple entry points for change. This is what I mean by that. So where there are going to be some systemic things and strategic things that we do. But then there are also going to be things like, as you become more aware, in this. As you become more aware in this session, you will respond differently. Just to your neighbors, you will, you will speak differently. And, and that's the key, right, to, to just in your everyday life. Because quite frankly, when every experience that I've shared thus far has nothing to do, I don't think, with any real system or processes. I mean, a little bit with, with Carrie and, and public safety, right, not, not being pulled over. But my true comfort comes from going to that little grocery store that's right by the village hall multiple times. It comes from the Starbucks multiple times, it comes from being lost in your building and how people greeted me. Because I'll tell you in other villages, I'll be lost and people will literally look and turn their heads. I mean, this is a real experience, or you ask and they complain not to know, and I know they work there, right? Or they send me, go to the front desk, they can help you. And so all of these individual interactions matter. And so don't take this part lightly, you know, either and how, and how you can interact differently. Or more of the same perhaps, because maybe, you know, many of these things you, you already know. Does that make sense? Yep, okay. So getting back to the training, if we were in person, one of the things that we would do is something that I call. Authentic introductions. And so. Well, let me, let me take a step back. So by the way, this is the same wheel that I showed you before. But you see that there is a whole nother circle around it. And so these are other things that impact experiences. So politics, which we've been talking quite a bit about, our legal system, the economy, historical stuff, our immigration system, education. So I'm, I'm just giving you another layer of, of what intersectionality looks like. Just, just so we just are, are all aware. So we could be living in the, in the same town, making the same money and all of that good stuff. But the economy could be impacting us differently or, or. You know, if we were born in the US versus recently immigrated, that could make a real difference. My history versus your history could make a real difference, even in terms of history in, in the books. So many of your history books, I don't know if you know, there's a bill right now. Called, it was recently filed called the American History Bill. And this bill is requiring that history lessons be suspended. And, and just civics be taught because so much of history in your, in our current schoolbooks are, is not accurate. So the American History Bill is requiring that different religions are included, that women's history is included, LGBTQ. African Americans, Native Americans. And so history has a lot to do with all of those other pieces of our identity. So just wanted to share that with you. All right, we shall move on. We are not going to take a break right now, we're going to keep moving. So we're going to move to social awareness. Larry mentioned earlier, we've got to start with social, with our self-awareness, but then we've got to think about what that looks like with everyone else. So I want to. Share, you know, just broaden this a little bit and talk about micro inequities. You, you may have heard of this before, but these are these small unconscious things that we do. That, you know, suggests that the other person is, is maybe inferior or, you know. They're not as good as or whatever. So the, just some examples of that might be. An impatient tone, avoiding eye contact, looking annoyed. Perhaps forgetting people's names or if the name is not a name that you're familiar with, pronouncing it incorrectly. And it's not that we always know, but we don't ask. Sometimes we just shorten the name because it's more convenient for us. Maybe not acknowledging people who are different, maybe not giving feedback. So, you know, this is from a work perspective, but sometimes we can see that people are not. So tangible example for me, I'm, I'm leading this political organization, I was speaking to a representative the other day. And I needed some help with something, and so he sent me a text and said, hey, do you need help with this thing? And I said, yes, that would be so helpful, thank you so much. And then the next day I said, hey, any updates on this issue? And he says, well, no, because you have to make a formal request in writing. Well, I clearly did not know that. If you send me a text, ask if I need help, I say, yes, I think the ball is moving. But for whatever reason, he didn't give me that timely feedback. So an entire day went by where nothing was done because I didn't know that I had to send an email and make a formal written request. Now, for whatever reason, when we feel close to people and we have a relationship, we say, hey, Larry, you know, if you want, want to get that done, you got to send that thing to me in writing, then I'll get right on it. But when we don't know people, for whatever reason, we don't do that. But it makes a difference because that means that everybody Larry has a relationship with, they're almost a step ahead because he's like, hey, you know. Or everybody I, I know, so Larry's a step ahead because I tell Larry, hey, listen, just send it to me in writing and then, and then I'll knock it out, but I can't do it without that. Then what about the people who don't know? Okay, so this is a micro inequity. Or then just discounting a person because of, of the way they dress or look or where they've come from. Okay, so these are micro inequities. On the flip side of that, there are micro affirmations. So as subtly as you are doing those things, you can also do it on the flip side. So you can mirror someone's, you know, body language a little bit, you can look them in the eye, you can give them feedback. You can not hesitate to give feedback, even if it's uncomfortable or you don't know how they'll receive it. Can give the benefit of the doubt. These are just little things that you can do that affirm people. When you're in meetings, if we ever get out of COVID, if you're in meetings, sometimes what happens is we know people really well. So I'm like, Joe, how is it going? How are those cats doing? What's going on? And I'm talking, 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 and other people, I'm like, hi, good morning, good morning. But Joe, tell me about the kids and then, so the cat's still sleeping with you and, you know. And so what it looks like to others is that there's this relationship with Joe, but not with other people. Which means if I raise an issue and you don't agree or I want to raise an issue, I might be afraid because, because we, this interaction doesn't happen with me. And, and so I perceive, I'm not saying it's true, but I perceive that all the good stuff's going to come from Joe and Jonathan and Gary. Because they're always talking and everybody else is quiet, so we're not in the in-group. It's just perception, but it, it matters. So even if you don't share, you know, the same excitement. If you could remember just to, to have the conversation or try to build a relationship with the person, that would be helpful. Okay? And then the last thing, just in terms of social awareness are, are trigger words. So, so just as, you know, things that, that trigger us, words or, or actions that cause an emotional reaction. And so the question that I want to ask you is, what sort of micro inequities or trigger words have you seen? In your meetings or just in the community or have you heard about? Because this is a part of, you know, well, what can we do differently? Well, we've got to know how it's showing up so that we know what that, you know, how to address it. So what have, what have you heard in terms of micro inequities or seen or experienced?
I, I get a lot of where do you live? I've had it more than, more than three times. You know, whether it's the parking lot of Mariano's or at the Glencoe Beach. It, it's, it doesn't matter to me because some things I've learned to let go. However, like a friend of mine visiting from Skokie, who's very white, by the way, noticed it and she said, why did they ask you where you live? Like, how does it matter? I was talking about their Vespa. So if you're talking about their Vespa, how does it matter to them where you live?
Yeah. And so by the way, there's tone with that. Some people may be thinking, I was just curious, so you know, where do you live? You know, so, oh, because, because sometimes people, I live in the south suburbs. And so if someone tells me south suburbs, I say, oh, which one, where do you live? Because I'm like, oh, maybe you're in one near me. And usually, and Margot, you're on mute because it looks like you've been talking and I'm like, I can't hear you. And so nothing, you know, that, I think that's fine if it's curiosity, you know, we, I want to bond with you. Sometimes what, what we hear, it's the tone. So where do, so where do you live? Oh, or, or what are you doing here? It, it just comes off differently.
Yes, it more, more often than ever, it comes across as, why are you here?
Yeah.
You know, the whole where do you live is clearly that couple did not ask my friend who doesn't even live here, they asked me. So that, that's what triggered her red flag in her mind. And she said, why didn't, why did they have to know where you live? And so that, those are kind of some of the things, which again, I'm saying. People probably mean it differently, but when it's perceived, it's perceived in a very different way.
So Erica, I have a question. So you know, earlier we talked about, say, the woman that works part-time. And, you know, part of the, part of the way to help, you know. You know, the community and connectivity is to ask, you know, to be engaged with them and ask about them and, and be genuinely curious. So then you've got this delicate line of being genuinely curious and then people seemingly now more sensitive to any question you might ask. So how do you, how do you walk that line, right? Because to me, I'm at the point where I, you know, I, everything can offend people. So how do you choose questions to ask and then sense for their, you know, their sensitivity towards it?
Yeah, and, and I wish I had a, a real scientific answer. Because we're all different and there are probably things you could say to me that I'm totally fine with, that my friend would not be, right? So it's, it's, it's an interesting question, but what I would say is, is two things. One, most people, when you're genuine, they can pick that up. Most, most people, even if you're getting it wrong or whatever, if it's coming from a good place. So it could be young girl, regular hours, hey, you're, you're new to the community or you, I, I, I haven't seen you in the store before, are you new to the community? You know, there's a tone and I haven't seen you before, it gives me some context. Love to, you know, introduce you around, just another sentence could give me some context that it's friendly. And, and you really want to connect with me. So the guy in the coffee shop could have easily said, um, good morning, good morning, I've been here every day, I never see you. What's, what brings you here? Simple, is very different from, so what are you doing here? Hello, I mean, it's just, I don't talk like that really, again, with hardly anyone. And so. Just a little context and then checking, checking our own bias, right? It's, it's, I wonder what, what leads me to this question? What leads me to, to this question, to this, to this statement? So the takeaway, the takeaway should not be memorized correct words. The takeaway should not be, let's be on this extreme political correctness, that's BS, it doesn't work. And, and people can pick that up. So I think it's, it's got to be about genuine curiosity and, and just asking from that perspective. And if I'm really wanting, like, if, if I'm really, whatever it is I'm really wanting, you should probably state that. You know, and provide some sort of context. So again, I, I, I would be curious, I, I, it's hard for me to believe if a police officer pulls me over. So what are, because I've heard this question a million times, well, so what are you doing over here? Like, I don't, I can't get the, the. Why, what is that? You know what I mean? I can't get the, the positive part about it. So in and of itself, is the question. Offensive, no, but in the context, yes. So we've, we've just got to think about the context. Does that make any sense for everybody? Okay.
Erica, as an interracial family, my children were approached regularly with some difficult questions. And we really struggled as a family to figure out, you know, how do we address this? And we, we came up with this line that we taught our kids. And when they felt they were being asked a question that was inappropriate or out of line, or they just didn't want to answer. We taught them to say, why do you ask? And about ninety percent of the time, people would go, oh my God, why did I, you know, I mean, it was just. They, it was a way for them to kind of catch themselves, right? Whatever it was, the question, the tone, the inappropriateness. But the good news was that once they said that, people caught on right away. Then there's always going to be that ten percent that are just, you know, bad questions, inappropriate questions. But, but that, that really helped our kids. And I would say, I agree with you, you know, on numerous occasions, gratefully not in Glencoe, but when my son has been stopped, it's the same question. What are you doing here? As close as Winnetka. And he would say, I live here. You know, now he was home recently and in a local coffee store and someone came up to him and said, oh, hey, are, are you visiting? You know, and it wasn't, and he felt very comfortable. No, actually, I grew up here and, and they had a wonderful conversation. So I agree with you, I think it's all in the way in which we pose the question.
Yep. And I love the comment, why do you ask? Because it does make us all think, why did I ask that?
I love that too, I'm going to start using it.
Yeah. Any other micro inequities or trigger words that you've heard?
Well, I can, I'll just give an example. When we were, we lived, we lived in the city when we had our kids and then we were moving out to the suburbs. And I have, I have clients, most of the clients look like me. And so when we were looking, we were looking in Evanston, Willmett and Glencoe. And so I would get descriptions of each of these towns from clients who lived in the North Shore. None of you have lived in Evanston. And I would get a very different description, often urban. Often, you know, just words that described Evanston as multicultural place, but did it in a way that wasn't, you know. It's different than the rest of the North Shore. From a negative sort of perspective. And. I grew up in Evanston, so I know what Evanston is. And so then I'd tell them, oh, I grew up in Evanston, I know what it's like. And they would say, oh, well, yeah, I didn't know you grew up there. And so it was. And so, you know, it, it wasn't necessarily that anyone met badly. But they, you know, there were code words to tell me it was something different than Glencoe.
Yeah. And here's the thing. We've been using these code words for so long that it seems normal. So it's sort of like, why is everybody tripping? Like, what are you talking about? But it's just been, become, it's just a part of, of the reality. And we're now just trying to make this reality more. Transparent. I think that's the word.
On a positive note, I do want to say, at least because we're an interracial couple. I've been asked, and my husband's been asked, and we've not been asked that in Glencoe, thank goodness, and I just hope people hear this and don't ask me. Is, did he rescue me or where did he find me or did I marry him for a green card or something like that? That's the first thing that comes to people's mind. So I'm actually on a positive note, grateful people in Glencoe don't ask that.
Well, see, that's interesting, I learned something. I, you know, that wouldn't come to mind and I wouldn't know that that would be your experience, I've, I've learned something. Yeah.
Along, I want to piggyback off what Jonathan said because I had a really similar experience when I was moving from the city. We'd, we had planned to raise our family downtown and so my boys were a little bit older when we decided to come up here. And people would similarly, I had, for whatever reason, in the preschool we were in, there was a lot of people moving to Winnetka. And at some point, you know, it was like, where are you move, you know, oh, you're moving too, where are you moving? You know, and it was like, oh, we're going to, we're going to Glencoe. And there was a lot of this like, oh, why would you go there? Like, so even within the North Shore, I think, even within communities that are very similar. I think even within communities that are very similar in a lot of ways, like Winnetka and Glencoe, there are these little biases around it. And then I similarly, like Jonathan, would say, "Well, I grew up in Glencoe." And then it was like, "Oh, okay, I get it now." You know, not like, like before, I really thought, "Maybe you were losing your mind, but now I see you're one of them." So, okay. And that, I don't know. It's such a hard thing to explain outside the context of this conversation, but it was so clear what was being said. But if you were to try and describe it, just as I did, it sounds a little cuckoo, right? And so I do think we need to be so aware of that because if people can have biases about the difference between Winnetka versus Glencoe, again, what help is there for the rest of us?
Yeah, yeah. So true. I used to house sit for one of the partners at Hewitt in Winnetka. And I remember the first time she told four neighbors that I would be there. One, you know, if you're going out of town, you want to make sure people know, you know, somebody's in your house. But she and I both knew that it could have been a problem for me. And she, like, literally gave me names and numbers of people to call in case. I thought that was interesting. But I appreciated her awareness of the environment. I didn't have any issues, but, you know, I thought that was interesting. All right, we shall move on. So we're going to talk about managing bias. I think we'll take another, just real quick, five-minute break. Is that okay with you guys? Yep. You're like, "Yes, I had to go to the bathroom a million years ago." All right, so it's 11:28, so we'll just call it 11:30. 11:35, so a little more than five minutes. Is that all right? Okay, so you're 11:35.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, it is 11:35. It's like almost everyone is back. Gil, are you back? And just have your camera off. And Gary and Anise? Perfect.
Yep, yep, I'm here.
Okay. And Anise? Only because I'm showing a video, so... All right, well, hopefully she will be back shortly. I'm glad you all came back. That's a good sign. Yay. So I'm going to show a quick video and we'll have some discussion on it. Can you guys see a different background that says "All" that we share at the top? Yes, okay, great.
Yep, can see it.
Thank you.
There's us and there's them. The high earners and those just getting by. Those we trust and those we try to avoid. There's the new days and those who've always been here. The people from the countryside and those who've never seen a cow. The religious and the self-confident. There are those we share something with and those we don't share anything with.
Welcome. It comes to ask you a few questions today. Some of them can be a little harsh, but I hope you will answer them honestly. Who is in this room wearing a class shirt? Who is a bonus fighter?
And then suddenly, there's us. We who believe in life after death. We who've seen UFOs. And all of us who love to dance. We who've been bullied. And we who've bullied others. And then there's us, the lucky ones who've had sex this past week. We who are broken-hearted. We who are madly in love. We who feel lonely. We who are bisexual. And we who acknowledge the courage of others. We who have found the meaning of life. And we who have saved lives. And then there's all of us who just love Denmark. So maybe there's more that brings us together than we think. TV2 Denmark, all that we share.
Okay, so reactions to the video. Initial reactions. Gary?
It was, for me, very moving, very well done. And an excellent example of, you know, starting off, you know, in light of this training, et cetera, of people that ostensibly at first only see differences and actually looking for commonality that is far deeper and more meaningful and important to everyone. And building those bridges as a result, as being all people together.
Very well said, Gary. Very, very well said. Thank you. Margot, I felt, I was watching your expression. You had a lot going on with your expression. You're on mute, by the way. Okay.
I loved that. I loved it. And I loved, I loved the, how everyone was so tentative in the beginning. And as they began to realize their similarities, how they came together. And I just thought it was beautiful.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
My favorite scene there was the comment about courage, right? So having the courage to stand up for who you are and really acknowledging that.
Yeah.
And identifying.
Great. Well, I wanted to, I'm going to pull up the presentation again. Okay.
Erica, can I, did I notice accurately that some of the people that were identified as possibly bullying also ended up showing up in that crowd that were the lonely ones, too? It looked like there was some overlap, which I thought was kind of interesting, you know, when you think about what could be causing, you know, that or whatever. Just a thought.
Yeah, that's interesting. I had never noticed that before. So, and I've seen this a million times. So I will look for that the next time. I never really picked up on that. Yeah, that's an interesting point. I'll have to, I'll have to see. It definitely was overlapped throughout the whole thing, but in those particular categories, not sure. One of the things I wanted us to get from that is, you know, beyond setting the stage, it has been the focus of what I've been trying to talk about in terms of lowering the waterline and just really getting to know people and, you know, just what happens in a genuine way when you do. There's nothing fancy about it. There's no science to it. It's just, it's just people connecting and relating with one another. And research does say, though, that you do that when you can find similarities first. It makes it easier to respect and value the differences. So I love that video as well. So I have the wheel up again because ordinarily, if we were together, or if we could do our breakout rooms, we would do something called Authentic Introductions. And what that means is we would look at all of these dimensions of diversity and many others. You see, it says "life experiences" and right to the left of it, it says "other factors." So we've got all these factors here, but then we have other factors that have influenced us to be who we are. And ordinarily, what I would do is break you up into groups and ask you to select two of these dimensions that have most influenced you and introduce yourselves to the other people using those dimensions. And start with where you grew up because that has a lot to do with who you are. And then just pick two. We don't have time to have everyone go, but I'm going to see if there might be a couple of people that might be courageous and want to share. I am going to provide you with an example first and then just see if there are just a couple of people who may want to share. And the point of it would be to find the connections just like they did in the video. And the same way we would do that here is the same way you would do this in the community. Maybe not as formal, but, you know, if you ever had a community training, it could be this formal, right? Because this is an exercise that always works. So I am going to select... Sorry, my dog, the mailman. Sorry about that. I am going to select education and I am going to select health, though health is not on here. And again, I'm going to start with where I grew up. So I grew up on the south side of Chicago, on 87th and Cornell. And I'm selecting education not because of what I learned. I don't remember. I'm too old now. But I do remember starting in Catholic school. My family is not Catholic, but learned a lot of discipline there, learned a lot about Catholicism there. I went on to Kimwood Academy in Hyde Park. Hyde Park is a really diverse area. So for me, going to school with Chinese, Japanese, Black, Mexican, white, normal, that was life for me. Not only school, but Hyde Park. Going up on the water right there. And at the point, that was just a part of life. I then went to Howard in Washington, DC, which is a predominantly Black school and city. So I learned a lot about my own history, but just learned a lot about, you know, just growing up there near one of the dorms. We had dorms on campus. And then Howard purchased a lot of apartment buildings. So where I lived, I think it was my sophomore year, was 13th Street. And now 13th Street is great. But back then, it was a lot of prostitution. And so if you are a kid and you think prostitution is illegal, and then there it is, right there. And on the weekends, the police officers help to direct the prostitution traffic, then it really shapes who you are. Your reality flips and you recognize that perhaps you don't know what you thought you knew in the nation's capital. And then you see the White House and it's so beautiful. And then two blocks away, there are all these homeless people. And then you see the White House and it's so beautiful and then two blocks away, there are all these homeless people. So all of that really shaped me and helped me to grow up, if you will. And then grad school in Lake Forest. So I had not been in an environment with that level of affluence on a consistent basis. You know, hanging out, that sort of thing. So that's how education has shaped me. Not to mention my father was an educator, so it's best been a big focus. And then health, I've been healthy, didn't even contemplate health ever. And it was cheerleader, studied ballet, 20 years, all that good stuff. And then I think it was six or seven years ago, I guess I block it out. I had a stroke. And so now I have a different perspective on health. I think about. Now I know it could happen to me. I never would have considered that before. Now I listen to my body differently than I did in the past. Now if things are stressful, I don't let it go, but so far because I understand the impact that it can have. So that is me, starting with where I grew up and I just picked two. One fit in the category of other factors, which was health and the other. So I'm gonna open it up and see if someone would like to share with, starting with where. All right. Right, thank you.
Much, right? So my two words would be religion and spirituality. And I would, other word. I was struggling which one I should choose to share. And I'll use miracle and family status. So I grew up, I'm a native of Detroit, Michigan. Then went to Northwestern High School where I was all city. And golf and in basketball. Yeah, I grew up in a. In the middle of game line. So there were YBIs, Young Boys Incorporated, if you're familiar with that term. That lived in that area, they ran the, the neighborhood. So in middle school, I used to walk to school with some of their brothers, smoking weed, getting high before school. But my mother and father were avid Christians who grew up in the Christian church. Church for us was you're gonna go. You stick, then you're gonna go and pray for healing. So we didn't miss church on a Sunday, which actually shaped my theology, shaped who I am. And was able to balance getting high and still serving God and loving God. Wind up becoming a minister. I've been pastoring since 1997. And pastor three churches in Detroit before moving to Glencoe almost three years ago. I've been married, married for about 21 years. We have one son who's 21. Got divorced. Prior to moving to Glencoe. And it got remarried this year on the 26th of July. I had to think, I saw my eyes go up. On the 26th of July. So now we, for combined, we have four kids altogether and three grandchildren. What really shaped me to make who I am is religion. It's what grounded me, it's who I am. I've held work. I worked in the county jail at Wayne County. I was a sheriff. Still have my status there. Matter of fact, I travel there once a month to do consulting work for the sheriff there. And so I know what it means to get high. I know what it means to deal with people who have been locked up in prison. Being the disciplinary hearing officer to take away their, their rights within the jail. Taking away the commissary, take away their phone. To send them to disciplinary isolation, what most people call a hole. And determine how long they stay. To have that power over somebody's physical being. But that's not who I am. I'm more of compassionate. I'm more willing to listen and forgive. And so that's who Duane here is.
Thank you so much for sharing. Thank you. Anyone else? Very interesting story.
I'll go.
Thank you.
Pete Mulvaney, place of origin. I was born in. A V Spad in West Germany. And so, but I was only there for a few years. And that's, it's funny, it's like my wife, she was also born overseas and along the same river. Of course, we didn't know it at the time, but we were growing up in a similar, in the same watershed, actually. So, yeah, so I think the two words I'll choose are geographic location. And education, sure. So sticking on the theme of place. I grew up in, you know, after, after moving to the States, my dad was in the military. We came to a community in Massachusetts. As a point of reference is probably something across between Evanston and Willmet outside of Boston. And grew up there, probably solidly in the dumb jock category. At least that's how I would have, how I self identified. And was a successful athlete, not a very successful student. But went to college, was injured early on. Joined the Marine Corps, injured. So health actually is probably a major theme in my, in what shaped me, having multiple back surgeries. And having five surgeries total. And but geographic, geographic location. So getting to college because of that, I was sort of disrupted in what I thought a college career was, which I thought was a sports career. Started to have to become a little bit academically oriented. And ended up going to five different undergraduate universities, but ultimately figuring something out and getting into a master's degree in engineering. And then an MBA at Kellogg with a career ranging from private equity to. To engines, you know, standard engineering. So. I don't know, I guess I didn't stick to the theme, but there's my life story. Those are my intersections.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Very interesting. Very interesting. One last person want to go?
I'll volunteer, Erica, if nobody else wants to, but I don't want to take airtime from anyone else. So I'll start, start with place of origin. I, I'm relatively local. I grew up in Displanes. The youngest of five kids. And I think the two that I want to talk a little bit about are immigration status and health. I'm gonna steal yours, Erica.
Okay.
So. Why immigration status? I'm first generation. Both of my parents immigrated here. Dad in 1957 and my mom in 1960. Were, my dad was a Hungarian refugee who fled just as the Hungarian Revolution got started in 1956. Went to Austria for a time and waited to figure out where to go next. And President Eisenhower, at the time, opened up the United States borders for 10,000 Hungarian refugees. He raised his hand, jumped on a ship. Out of, I believe, Germany and arrived in New York. Somewhat unceremoniously, right around the first of the year in 1957. And he got a job at the time with the Displanes Park District. Who essentially took him in as not only an employee, but took care of him, gave him a place to live. And found clothing and. Possessions because he liked to tell the story that he arrived in the United States with $2 in his pocket in quarters. And that was pretty much all he had because that's what they gave him as he got on the boat. My mom got here in 1960. And came with her family. They actually left Hungary, but my parents left Hungary the same day. But my mom was in Austria for four years and had some formative life experiences there that, that were very difficult. And left Austria with her entire family in contrast to my dad who left by himself. And she landed in the south side of Chicago. My grandfather was a, he got a job as a building custodian in Hyde Park and. Did that work and turned out, it became a building superintendent eventually. Until he retired in the late 1970s and they moved to Displanes. My parents met in Chicago at a dance at a German restaurant. Neither of them came there that evening with one another. They were there with other people. On dates and ended up. Making a connection and went to a coffee shop and spoke. For about five and a half hours and just drank coffee and got to know one another. My dad proposed two weeks later. My mom said no. And a year and a half later, he proposed again and she said yes. And so that was the late, late 50s, early 60s. I have four siblings that were all born within five years and then I was born 13 years later. So kind of a, as I would say, an oops, my mom would say a blessing. So that, that experience, my family's experience absolutely shaped growing up for me. And the world of having half of my first, first cousins, four or 5,000 miles away. And the other half right around the Chicago area was interesting. I've only really ever met my, my dad's side of the family twice. So that's an odd experience, but we're friends on Facebook now, so we've got that. But health is the other. About. 14 years ago, I was experiencing some rapid weight loss. I was 26 at the time, did not know what was wrong with me. Was feeling terrible for about two months, ended up in the hospital with a diagnosis of type one diabetes. Absolutely no family history of it and no awareness of where it came from, but here it was. And it defines pretty much every minute of every day for me. And technology makes it a lot easier, but it's, it's a burden that you can either choose to allow to push you over or that you pick up and carry so that you can do what, what life brings you. And thankfully, since that time, life has brought me a lot of wonderful things, including two daughters and a wonderful wife. And the opportunity to be in a community like this. So lots of, lots of things define us, but those two things particularly for me.
Thank you so much. That was really great. Anyone burning to share their story? Anyone else? So what, what, what are your reactions to what you've heard so far? This, the folks who shared, including myself?
I'd say people are full of surprises. You don't always, you can't judge a book by its cover, whatever the phrase is.
Yep.
And I admire the courage that people have to share themselves with a group of people that they mostly hardly know.
Yeah.
Just somewhat defining ourselves through the difficult stretches. Often not the easy ones.
Yeah.
I was amazed at the number of connections and this is a little bit my worldview, but I found like in every one of your stories, I was like, oh, wait, I want to talk to you about that. I, you know, I went to school in Hyde Park or, you know, my mom has type one, whatever, that kind of stuff. It just, I think it makes it. Easier to find common ground when you know more about someone.
Yeah, you got it. So when you do something like this, it helps you to uncover and understand yourself first. Because not all of the time, and we are aware of these different aspects about our lives, but not all of the time do we sit and think about what has really shaped me. Okay. Because when you do that, then it informs you of your own worldview. Sometimes someone can say something or demonstrate something and you're annoyed or you're conversely very happy about it. But you don't really know why that is. But if you go through something like this, you realize, oh, you know, that thing is something that really shaped me. That's why I can really connect with them. Or if they do the opposite, that's why I don't care for them, but you hadn't really thought about it. Hopefully you also understand that. Having a small amount of knowledge about someone or not. Or seeing something different about them doesn't make them any less valuable. I mean, it seems fairly obvious, but. It's, it's a societal thing, like if you're not like me, then you're not as good as I am. Or if I don't know a lot, then I kind of put a negative spin on it. So hopefully you can just see that that's just not the case. And this also hopefully helps us to see what people really need. It helps us to have real conversation. And, and along with that, equal doesn't mean treating everyone the same. I hear all the time, I treat everybody exactly the same. Well, that's not really the goal because what I need or what someone needs is a married. Couple with children in Glencoe would be very different from someone who is young and single. They just have different needs. I mean, yes, everybody wants safety. They want, you know, to be able to work and etc. But there are some other things that, that, you know, is just different. And so hopefully you got a lot out of this exercise. Every time I have participants experience it, they say, gosh, I've worked with this person for years, never knew this about them. They often say, I feel closer to them now. Or some people we would said, I didn't really care for them before until I heard this introduction. And now I get them a little bit more and, and I have a respect, right? A respect now. So.
I'd like to add something, Erica.
Yes.
I always thought, oh, I'm an immigrant. I came here when I was 22, right? I. When I heard Phil's story. My unconscious bias of thinking all these white people around me are these great American accents and are so Americanized, they're all American. And so hearing Phil's story and understanding that background, it actually changes a lot about how I think about. These other so-called that I feel like comfortable Americans because clearly. From his background, from hearing his story and what his parents had to go through is, is not easy. So I think that part of me that, I mean, I like to call myself the person with empathy, but this is like a different side that completely. I was so biased about that I noticed.
Yeah. And thank you for the honesty there because we all have them. And this is the point. And this is why I said it never ends because you learn more and then you have another aha moment. And you know, and then, and then that causes you to listen and do things differently, right? So thank you so much for sharing that. I encourage you to, you know, in your own meetings, you could continue this because of course we, we couldn't get to everyone. But it'd be a good idea to have this understanding. Excuse me, within your own teams. And then just think about day-to-day interactions with other people. And not that you would say, tell me two dimensions that have really shaped you. But you know, you could ask questions that, that get to below the waterline, right? Instead of, you know, some of the surface things that we do. And so Gary, you know, when you were talking about the video, well, this is, this is how you uncover, moving from one square to the next square. Right? And, and have those groups of, okay, we all like to dance. Okay. So we have two people, Phil and Peter, that, that we have learned. Their, their background and may not have been what, what we thought in terms of, of their origins, right? So this is, this is how the work gets done, multiple entry points. Okay. So this is another video, but I think I'm going to skip that for right now. And I'm going to have us, so we're again are in this section of managing bias. So one way to manage bias is. So one way to manage bias is to get to know people and that's why we did that exercise. If you look in your handout, this time we do need our handout, you should see this circle of trust. You should see a diagram that looks like this one on the screen. What I want you to do in the name column, you don't have numbers on yours, but in the name column, I want you to write down five names that, of people that you trust the most. It cannot be your family members, darn. I know Sharon like, what? Who else can I trust? But five names of the people you trust the most. And again, write them down in the first column, right next to the number. It's where you'll put the name. Or you don't have a number, so in the first column, period. Now hopefully you've done the five names. What I'd like for you to do now is at the very top, I want you to write gender, race, age, sexual orientation and education. And it's so it should look the way that it looks on my screen. And once you do that, I want you to fill out the chart. So if in your first row, you have Bob, so under gender, you would put male or non-binary, whatever the gender is, the race, the age, your proximate age, sexual orientation, if you know, or you know, your best guess, and education. Take about 30 seconds to finish up. Okay, so as you look at your chart, what patterns, if any, do you see there? I have to be honest. Oh, mine is embarrassingly, there isn't, I mean, the pattern is that they're all the same. It's shameful.
Yeah.
I also had some trouble coming up with five people that I trust.
I hear that all the time, but okay. Yeah, I had the same reaction. I have three columns where I was simply able to draw an arrow all the way down because they're exactly the same.
Anybody else? Anything different?
I'd say for me, I was blessed to have an extremely close college class. So we were Evan Scholars, we were all caddies and we were all, you know, similar, but just a wonderful class of people. So we are extraordinarily close, so that's, that's the circle of friends.
Mine are different, but they're all women for some reason.
Okay.
But they're all from like different parts of the world, but they're all women.
So whatever the pattern is, it's, it's yours, right? It's, it's for you to discover. So for you, it might be that, hey, I really only trust women and, you know, that's, that's your point of awareness. And so whatever it is, I want you to know that, or remind you that these are choices. So the reason you couldn't choose family is because you can't choose family, right? So all of the other choices are ones that you've made. And so we can also make new choices and it doesn't mean to get rid of other people. It does not mean to start indiscriminately trusting people. That's not it either. It is simply to think about how we can expand our circle of trust. So just to get to that a little bit more, if you look at the outer circle, which I call level one, it is what represents the most diversity in our lives. So this would be, you know, Jonathan, I think it was you mentioned, you know, you go to different parts of the city with your clients. And so you see them regularly, so maybe you're used to the people at the, at the reception desk and you go to the same Starbucks. And so it's just a lot of diversity in, in your business and, and maybe where you dine and things of that nature. You don't know them well, but, but you see them consistently. Level two, that level of trust, there's some diversity there, but, and it usually comes with people that you've been through something with. So for those of you, and they've earned that trust, you know, usually in a work relationship or church or something. So both, both groups that are on the line today, you may have gone through projects or difficult times in, in the village where you've had to work together and you've earned or you trust one another because of the information that's been shared and the things that you've been through. Level three is a much smaller circle, you'll notice. And level three is, those are the people that you tell the secrets to, that if there's a hunch about something going on in the village, you might call them first before you go through the official channels. If you learned a new way to do whatever, you talk to them about it. In, after this training, they're, they might be the people you call and talk about your innermost thoughts about it. And so that circle is a lot smaller. And again, it's not like let's trust everybody, but it is giving some real thought to how do I open up this circle? Because there are probably people that want to be there. There are probably people that want to hear from you, learn from you, go out with you for beer or wine or something. And, and how do we do that? And recognizing that we have choice. So Joe, I, I think it's, it's important to acknowledge that we, some of us have old friendships. I literally have friends from grammar school that are still my friends and we're doing things in our organization together. I have tons of people from high school that I really interact with, I guess, you know, because it was Hyde Park and I can still access it, it, it makes it easy to do on Facebook and all that good stuff. And then I have really good college friends. I have one that's staying with me now. And so those are irreplaceable, you know, period. And we have a choice, right? We can bring in some other new people. So with all of that said, one of my good friends is a Jewish woman who lives in Womet. One, some of my good friends are nothing like me and they still live on the East Coast because I lived there for a while. And so we do have that option and that option again just expands our worldview and allows some of these difficult conversations to be easier because we're having them and we are feeling a level of comfort. Does that make sense, everybody? Yep. All right. So what I want to move to now, again, I'm still talking about managing bias. There are a group of behaviors that are called inclusive intelligence behaviors. And these are behaviors that if everybody is demonstrating these behaviors, you tend to see more inclusion in an environment. You tend to, people tend to feel like they are more valued and accepted. So first, ongoing self-awareness, having empathy, actively communicating, being open to differences, being accountable, fair, supportive and courageous. So what you should have in your handout is an assessment with these behaviors. And so if you could take a couple of minutes to fill that out, the assessment should be asking you the frequency in which you demonstrate those behaviors. Ready to have that in their handout? Yes? Yep, okay. So in the interest of time, I'm going to move us forward. What I will ask you to do as a part of your homework is any of those items where you scored yourself a three or below, you may just want to circle it because there is an opportunity there for you to demonstrate that behavior more frequently. And it could, and be a guide, just a personal guide for yourselves for just ongoing personal development, okay? The next few things.
I just want to be clear, I may be the only one, but I didn't have a score option on mine. I had a series of questions called managing expectations. I thought that's what.
Same. Yeah, same here.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Well, there should have been, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. There should have been a list of questions that look like these, starting with self-awareness. That's not in your guide? Nope, okay, I'll get that out to you. Okay, I'll get that out to you.
You have this, but it just says notes.
The questions came under the heading managing expectations, questions to navigate. They had the four questions and places to write a short answer.
That's it, that's all.
Yep, that's something separate. So I will get this assessment out to you and through Sharon. And so what it will be, will be these exact behaviors that you see here. And there will be a scoring mechanism. So under self-awareness, it, self-awareness is further defined and you will be able to score how frequently you demonstrate those behaviors. So I'll get that out to you and it's, it's going to be good for just, for, for yourself to keep that up, keep looking at it and as a point of personal development. So what you guys were referring to are just tools that I just wanted to share while you're working with each other, but working in your own jobs, communicating with other people. These are managing expectations. This is just generic, but what it's saying is sometimes issues come up simply because we haven't managed expectations and we find that out later after our expectations have not been met. And what happens is if I am different from you, then my expectations are really different. So very small, very short example, I was doing this with the board in another municipality and we had a gentleman who had been with that, that municipality for many, many years and I think he was in his 60, late 60s. And there was another lady who had been in the job maybe three or four years, but she was in her 30s. She had been in a regular habit of emailing. The gentleman who was, had been there for a long time rarely checked his email because that just wasn't the norm for him in his working career. And so we found out in this retreat that we did that she felt that he was not responsive to her and therefore didn't really care for her. And we found out in this meeting that half of the time, he just never even looked at his email. But imagine if you're a person that communicates on email and somebody's been ignoring them, you know, how that could feel. So what is the point? When you manage expectations, this isn't about just our outcomes, but how are we going to work together as a board, as a, as a forum, as a whatever it is that you're doing? It just becomes really helpful to, to iron these out. And we often think this is simple, obvious, common sense, but it's only obvious and common sense to you, okay? Other things, another thing that I wanted you to consider is just the difference between observing something and evaluating. One tool I want you to take away is being an observer of yourself without judgment, just observing. How am I responding? What am I thinking? What is my self-talk? No judgment, but what is it? What is it in these kinds of situations? What is it in this kind of situation? Because when, when you bring stuff to your consciousness, you can do something differently. Often we are on an unconscious place, in an unconscious place, so we can't make a change. So I just want you to distinguish between observation and evaluating yourself and other people. Another tool that I want you to consider is just when you receive feedback, this is a tough topic. And so a lot of times we receive feedback, we blame, we can blame others, we blame ourselves. But we can listen and sense our own feelings and needs and then we can listen and sense their feelings and needs. And so I want you to focus on those last two bullets when we receive feedback because in this topic, it can be tough. When you hear something that you haven't heard before, it's like, what? You know, it takes you aback. And I want you to consider these four steps, ordinarily we would practice them in pairs, but when someone says something that's really startling, it would be good for you to get into the habit of saying, tell me more. Not of, I, you know, I, it's hard to believe, I don't know what you mean, just tell me more. It opens the room up, the conversation up. It opens the room up, the conversation up for just that. Make sure you paraphrase so that you are clear. See if there's something important that, you know, that, to them about it, and then tell them what you're willing to do. And if they, if they're not asking for you to do anything, then you just want to stay in those first two steps. Trust me, that is a very powerful tool in, in helping have dialogue without being politically correct. Along with that, I just want you to consider, um, what I call both and thinking. Usually, um, it's people thinking either or, it's either this way or that way. But sometimes, as, as Larry mentioned earlier, it's, it's both and, okay? So that gun scared you, Erica, and the police officers have been going through a lot of stuff too. So it's not either or, it's both and. And when you do that, you can start to uncover like me thinking. You know, I, I resonate with this because it's like me, I think this way. But if you, if you can get to either or, you can start to uncover that and uncover your unconscious bias, which is a whole nother class. And then I want you to just consider, um, intent versus impact. I believe we're all good people, we're trying to do things, um, in the best way possible, or you wouldn't be in these roles. But sometimes the impact is different. And so we have to just accept that, we're not perfect. Sometimes it's like that, having nothing to do with diversity, it's like that in your own family, so this is no different, okay? I want to leave you with this, with any type of, uh, engagement, community engagement, there are always practical needs and personal needs. So these practical ones are, you know, discussion with, you know, we're here today for this training and I, you know, want to clarify this and we'll hear the ideas, we're going to agree on next steps, of course, we all work in that way. But keep in mind that in all of your interactions, people want to, they want to maintain their self-esteem in their interactions with you and everybody else. They want to ha- you know, it'd be good to have a level of empathy, people want to feel involved. They want to hear the reasons and rationales for things and not just be told what to do. And so this, this is just a chart to help with the, the more personal side of things. And then lastly, as homework, I'd like you, based on everything that you've heard today, what behaviors and actions will you personally take to create an environment of inclusion for the village? And, um, that is it, that is all, with a minute to spare. So, uh, any final thoughts or comments before we go off to our day?
Let, let me, uh, indicate that a final set of thoughts or comments, then of course, there's some board business we have to do before we go on. Call it a day, but I want to thank you, Erica, uh, for the fabulous presentation. And say how interesting and thought-provoking and excellent it was. So I appreciate it and I believe that it will materially help both us as a board to understand what we should be doing and what, what our village people are doing and to appreciate their work on this. And also the, uh, Human Rights Forum, I think will gain substantially from it and trying to move forward and have new perspectives, so thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And, and I have to say, um, it matters, and I, I tell Sharon this all the time, so I'm not just saying this, that your leadership matters, Phil's leadership matters, um, and it's, and is significantly different from other places. So, you know, while we're all learning, uh, you're on the right track. You, you really are relative to not only other work, other corporations, you really are doing things. You're more open than I've seen, um, a lot of places and a lot of people. So it's, it's really an honor because you, you know, this isn't work for me, this is my purpose in life. And so to, to, uh, you, you dream of a client that's on this path, so you can work together versus people who are very, very resistant. So, you know, thanks so much for everybody sharing today, it, it means a lot. We've learned a lot from each other and it's just, it's just a part of the path. Any, anything else before I sign off? Thank you, Margot, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, one other thing I do want to say, you know, I don't know when we'll have a chance to meet again together, but I do really appreciate, there's some real dialogue that happened today, you know, real life experiences, real questions. Please continue to do that, because there's, there's more underneath just with this group. And so, so continue that, so, because if, if we can't do it with this group, we certainly can't do it with the community, right? And so I really en- encourage you to do it, sometimes it's going to be uncomfortable. It's life, it's okay, you'll be alright. But, 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 but continue that, because it's, it's going to make a big difference. Alright, I am going to stop sharing and I'm going to sign off, so you.
Thank you, Erica, great to meet you.
That was wonderful.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you, Erica.
Alright, see you soon.
Bye-bye.
Bye, Erica. Bye.
Alrighty, uh, in terms of the formality of, of the fact that we're having our meetings and things, let me, as I always do, ask, does anyone have any other business to come before the board before we, uh, move forward? If not, Phil, were there any comments that came in while we were having our meeting that we should be reading in terms of public comment?
There were not, President Loubin.
Okay, thank you all for your attention and involvement. Uh, I think you all were terrific and I appreciate it. That brings us to the most important part of today, our motion to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Sharon, we stand adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Goodbye, everybody.
Bye.